Welcome to the March 7, 2023 Board of Commission meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agenda and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. The commission now utilizes speaker request forms. If you would like to speak on an item, please complete a speaker request form and locate it in the bookshelf at the back of the chambers and return to Commission Manager Holly Hennies, located at the lower right side of the dials. At this point in time, I will call the meeting to order and I will request Ms. Hagcock to do a moment of silence reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Hagcock. Next on our agenda is the review and approval of the agenda. Is there any additions, any comments from the public? Is there any additions or comments from the commission? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Drew, seconded by Lassiter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we come to recognition of new employees. First of all, I want to thank all the employees that showed up today. It looks like a lot of them had left, but some from the jail had just got out, done work in the night shift and came through here and visited with us, so we really appreciate that. One of the things that I heard when talking to our employees out there was the benefit package was a good reason why they came here, of the two. So, does any other commissioners have any comment? Ms. Hagcock.
Yeah, thank you. I thought it was interesting that they just got off work and the people that have been working in the, as correction officers, they were calling themselves COs and ISOs and I'm like, I don't know what that means. So, they're looking at me like, okay. Usually they just say correction officer or something, but I was kind of freaked out if they worked at, you know, corrections and different stuff like that, just some more funkier questions and they answered them very well and they loved their job. So, I thought it was pretty cool that they were excited and the nurse, Ms. Jennifer, that worked them too, she's just always smiling. And then we have some from the Public Defender's Office, a few, like three of them, new employees and I thought they were really cool just listening to some of their stories and two of them knew each other, so it's nice to visit with the new employees and see how they're doing and just looking at their smiles a lot, so that's a good sign for us and just want to welcome to the team because what a great team to add to Pennington County, so thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Does any other commissioners have a comment?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Raskin.
I enjoyed talking to the new employees and once with the Sheriff's Department, I asked them what their aspiration was going forward and they said they want to be a county sheriff, so you got to reach either where you got to go.
Okay, any further comments? With that, we'll move on next to on our agenda, welcome board employees. We'll go to the consent agenda and I'll recognize Commission Manager Ms. Holly Hennies.
For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 21, 2023. Number seven is to acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct a bingo and a raffle, a place for a Meow Rescue Court. Number eight is approval of the permit to occupy the right-of-way and road closure/traffic control for the 2023 Deadwood-Mickelson Trail Marathon. Number nine is approval of the permit to occupy the right-of-way for the 2023 RS-AS DAC ride across South Dakota. And number 10 is to declare 2011 John Deere 772 GP motor graders, asset number 005949 and 005950, and surplus for the purpose of trade is submitted by the Highway Department.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. At this time, are there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the agenda? Seeing none, is there any from the commission that would like to report? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Lassiter.
Seconded.
Seceded by Drews. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Now we come to regular agenda items. Item number 11 is a status hearing for the application to establish a right-of-way to an isolated track pursuant to SDCL 31-22-1, Cross Sabres, LLP. And this is continued for 2/21/23 Board of Commission meeting and at this time I'd call Jay Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. It's another nice snowy day out there. So, I was on the phone this morning with Mr. Riggins, Quentin Riggins, who's the attorney for Cross Sabres, and I was able to confirm this morning that the parties are in fact still requesting a continuance. They are communicating. As you know, I think one party had to get a new engineer and I think the attorney is stuck in weather and so for all of the above reasons, I was requested by Mr. Riggins to show up here this morning and say that they are seeking a continuance of this matter to continue this status hearing to the next board meeting on March 21st. And so what presumably would happen on March 21st would be all of the parties would be able to actually be here and communicate with the commission whether or not they have reached a resolution or an agreement for access to the property. If the answer is no, then I'm assuming there'll have to be some discussion at that time as to where we go from there. And just real quick, off the top of my head, the commission would still have to decide whether or not the subject property at issue is isolated or not. If it's not, that ends the matter. If you determine that it is isolated, then you've got to lay out a route and assess damages to the party wanting the route. And that's going to take some time and then assessment and appraisal of the property and everybody needs to come in and present, I think this route is the appropriate one or this route's the appropriate one. And the board's going to have to listen to all of that testimony and then decide and based on your one or two visits to the site, the snowy visit and then the good visit that you were able to actually walk around and see everything, so that's way out in the future. But for now, my request is that you approve a motion to continue this status hearing to the next meeting, the 21st of March.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Jay. I heard Drews first and then I'll go to Lassiter.
I would, if you're willing to accept it, make a motion to continue the status hearing for the application to establish a right-of-way to an isolated track pursuant to SDCL 31-22-1 for Cross Sabres, LLP until March 21st.
Second.
Motion was made by Drews, seconded by Lassiter.
That's what I was going to do.
Okay. Any discussion from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'd look for, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Jay.
Thank you.
Okay, this brings us to item number 12, a request for authorization to purchase equipment using county allocations, Mr. John Kaiser, Assistant General Manager, Central States Fair. John, you have the floor. Happy to recognize yourself.
Good morning. John Kaiser, Central States Fair. Coming today just to seek approval, to purchase equipment, just to maintain the grounds and facilities at the Central States Fairgrounds. Historically, we haven't. We've used the allocation for capital improvements and then just maintenance items not related to equipment, your O and M, if you will. We recently had a theft, which kind of opened our eyes to equipment and the availability and the expenses and how much it costs, it's like that, so we lost a Bobcat, a trailer and a pickup. Luckily, the trailer was recovered down in New Mexico, but everything else is still missing at this current time. What we're, you know, we're basically looking just to, there's nothing written in the agreement between the county and the Central States Fair. I spoke with Cindy, Ms. Cindy Muller, and spoke to her about it and she thought it was a good idea and there was a way to implement it and I just wanted to make sure that I came forward and spoke with you guys about it, just so you guys understood where the taxpayer dollars would go. All of the maintaining of the equipment would be done by the Central States Fair, so there'd be no expense there, it's just the original purchase for the form.
Okay. John, just one question, did you, did insurance cover any of this?
We're still working on that.
Still working on insurance?
Yep.
Okay.
At this point, we're not really anticipating the pickup and the Bobcat returning, but the trailer we did recover thankfully, so.
Okay, appreciate that. Is there any questions from the commissioners for John?
Mr. Chair.
Ms., or Mr. Raskin.
So, when you purchase a piece of equipment, for an example, tractors, what's the process for doing that then?
You know, I'll be honest, thankfully, we've had fantastic sponsors as far as the tractors go, so we, you know, we purchased a Bobcat not long ago, probably about five years ago or four years ago, excuse me. Typically, we, if it's over a certain amount per Central States Fair's requirements, we bid it out, but we do try to utilize our sponsors as best we can when we do this, just because they usually provide for us and it's nice to be able to return the support that they provide to us. It's tractor-wise and Bobcat-wise and we honestly haven't had to do much. We've been able to either do it through surplus options in the past or like county machines that weren't good enough to go back to trade in. You know, we budget pretty hard on that, so this would be kind of new for us to be able to go out and get new equipment. Plus with the division funds and the other funding sources that we've been able to have recently, you know, the amount of improvements and things that we're doing at the grounds has exploded. We're doing way more than we've ever done in the past, which is great, and we're hosting more events, which is great, but that does include just faster wear and tear on your equipment and, you know, and on certain things like that, so the important thing that I know would just be to communicate with, with the county as far as what we're purchasing so that in the unlikely situation that there was a breakup of the two entities, the county would still maintain the property and still possess the property that they purchased, such as the equipment as well, so.
Okay, thank you, John.
Ms. Hagcock, are you done, Brown?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, Ms. Hagcock.
So, John, what's the cost of the equipment?
For example, the Bobcats that we're looking at, thankfully, were municipalities, so there's a discount there and some nonprofit stuff in there as well that helps us, but you know, on average, our new Bobcat's going to run you close to $75,000.
And do you have to go through the bidding process through the same way as the county does or is it different?
That's something that we're still looking at and I was going to review that with Mrs. Muller when, just, but I just wanted to make sure that I understood what was going on here first.
So, this is just for the Bobcat or you're looking for more than 75?
It's, and that's just a number that I've just had quoted just recently. I mean, honestly, we hadn't, we'd been looking at used equipment to a certain extent and we still will as well, but that was just a quote that I'd received. As far as the equipment that I, that we need, it's endless, you know, but this was just, I just wanted to make sure that moving on forward, that we'd be allowed to do it with open communication with you guys. The equipment that we purchased will definitely be, will definitely run it through our Facilities Committee at the Central States Fair, which we do have commissioners that sit on that and, but it was kind of just like an umbrella, this is kind of an umbrella request moving forward that we'd be able to use those dollars towards equipment purchases.
Yeah.
So, I really don't have it broken down as far as like this is what we're going to buy at this time and this is what we're going to buy next year and so on and so forth.
Well, I was looking at the agreement for operations and use of fairgrounds, property and buildings, there's normal maintenance and major repairs and then improvements and it seems like some of these, or these things that you're talking about are used for the fairgrounds in order to be operating, but at the end of the day, it would be used taxpayer dollars, so you, it seems like number one, you'd have to go through the bidding process and number two, that in order to have that maintenance repair for the fairgrounds, that makes sense. So, for you doing this, the main thing is to follow the proper, use the proper procedure in order to do that, so there's no discrepancy on that. I think that's a huge thing for people when, if they're going to come back, because if it's taxpayer dollar and not just fairground capital use, then I think that's going to be the difference.
Mr. Chair.
You done, Deb?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Drews.
Thank you. John, I appreciate what the Fair Board has done in the past and where you're at today in establishing the long-term, the facilities, the capital improvement committee, et cetera, to take care of the buildings. Also, obviously, there's lots of grounds that are to be taken care of, you need equipment to do that. I know that in the past, a lot of that equipment has been hand-me-down equipment that probably doesn't have a long lifespan after you once receive it, so I'm in total agreement that we move forward with this and that certainly doesn't mean that they would have new equipment to work with, but there may need to be a piece or two that needs to be new in order to accomplish what they need to, what needs to be done at the Central States Fairgrounds.
Is there any further discussion from the board?
I would like to add, if I could, that, you know, a lot of times, one thing that we focused on extensively in the past five years is the fairgrounds as being, you know, really good community partners as well, so this equipment stretches far beyond just the fairgrounds. We've used it to help with Little League field cleanup days, we've used it to help install tents for fundraisers for the Performing Arts Center of the Black Hills. This equipment spans far beyond just the acreage that we sit on at the fairgrounds. It benefits a lot of the people in this community and we're proud of that fact too, so.
Thank you, John. I think this is the first step in the process. Ms. Hagcock.
So, and we need to direct the staff to update the operating, operation or operating agreement. I think that's a good thing to put in there that way in the, in the future if they need to do this, that they just follow that process and procedure in the future when they're, we wanted to allocate funds for the fairgrounds with taxpayer dollars, so. I don't know who does that. Do you, Commissioner LaCory, who updated the last one?
I did.
I think if we get through this part, we can, I think there's enough, we can communicate sending in the board to bring back.
Well, it's part of the motion, so I appreciate that if you read the motion.
Mr. Chair.
You done, Deb?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr.?
I'll go ahead and move to allow the Central States Fair Inc. to purchase equipment with county allocated funds and further move to direct staff to update the operating agreement.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Raskin, executed by Hagcock. Is there any further, is there any public comment? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Next, we come to items from Cindy Muller.
Good morning, Casey Iceland, Chief Deputy Auditor. Rushmore Hockey Association has applied for a special retail on-sale malt beverage and wine license for an event they are holding on March 15th. We're just looking for approval on that.
Okay. Any questions for Casey? Any public comment on this? Go back to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Hagcock to approve what Casey had just, do we need, we need to read that in, Casey? Did you read that whole thing?
Did I read it all? Yeah.
Okay, good. So, a motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Casey.
You're welcome. And I think for Wild Springs Solar, I'm hoping Melissa Schmidt is on Zoom.
We're going to have to table it until 9:30 though.
Oh, yes, that is a public hearing at 9:30.
Thanks, Casey. I just flipped the page on that one. So, commissioners, 9:30 is when they're going to be on Zoom to be able to write it, so I'd look for a motion to table item 13B. It's been moved by Hagcock. Seconded by Lassiter, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. With that, we will go on to item number 14. He is here. Items from the State's Attorney Mark Vargo and Anna Lindroth. Thank you, folks, for stepping up early. Mark, are you, we're on your item.
Oh, sorry. I knew you were ahead of me.
I seen you, you guys were on the other side of the door, so you didn't see the screen, so.
All right, well, good morning. Mark Vargo, County State's Attorney. What we're bringing you is a request that we be allowed to apply for a grant that relates to a domestic violence investigator. While there are some issues nationwide as far as the level of funding of VAWA, we still feel that it's appropriate to put in and if we can get that spot, I've brought the people that really understand what it is and why it is that this investigator is so important, including the investigator that we presently have, who spends probably about half his time on DV cases and can spend a lot more if in fact we had enough time, but he's torn between lots of different things. The thing that I want to remind you of and that I guess I will lead with is that this investigator does very different things than the police detectives and the sheriff's investigators. This is somebody who is principally going to be concerned with tracking down witnesses, following up on any defense allegations or notice of third-party perpetrator, those sorts of things, which are largely outside of the purview of the police departments or the sheriff's office. Usually by the time these things are happening, we're, we might be a year or more beyond when an investigation was actually occurring. So, it's absolutely essential that they be investigated and this has been a very useful mechanism. It's actually saved the county, I think, a ton of money in the sense of resolving cases, either by establishing that the defense might be accurate or by establishing the defense is distinctly inaccurate, but I'll let my folks tell you exactly what we're thinking. So, I'll start with Anna Lindroth, who is our domestic violence attorney.
So, like Vargo said, I'm the prosecutor for intimate partner domestic violence crimes here in Pennington County. So, my entire caseload consists of intimate partner domestic violence. I have about 200 cases total. That's pretty consistent. About half of those are felonies and the rest are misdemeanors, which includes stalking cases. So, why domestic violence is so difficult and important to really fully investigate is because domestic violence is about one abuser maintaining power and control over the victim. And when that power gets taken away, that's when the abuser becomes the most violent. And when you think about the key point, the very pinnacle of that power being taken away, it's when the abuser reports the violence or the victim reports the violence and the abuser gets taken into jail. So, what we end up having, what the majority of my time is devoted to, is working on very severe cases where the abuser is consistently throughout the lifetime of the pending case, trying his hardest to take back the control and force the victim or coerce the victim into not testifying. So, in order for us to successfully prosecute and prove these cases at trial, they're essentially, the case is a living kind of organism where Steve, our domestic violence investigator or our investigator who works with me on domestic violence cases, Steve and I are consistently working on these cases all the way up to the point of trial. So, you can imagine that the amount of time that we put into these cases is, it's astounding. The other important thing to point out is because of the lethality of domestic violence, we're working, essentially, we're working homicide prevention. And as you know, there are domestic violence homicides here in Pennington County, but we take each case very seriously and when we are investigating these cases after the police or the sheriff has brought the case to us, we consider our job to be preventing a future homicide. So, that's essentially why we take these cases so seriously, why we put so much time into them. Since Steve and I started working together, every single case we've taken to trial, we've won. We have also managed to, through Steve's work, we've managed to achieve very favorable plea offers, which of course is kind of the best resolution. We're avoiding trial, we're saving resources, we don't have to put the victim through a trial and we've managed to get many, many cases to resolve with prison sentences or having the defendants plead to aggravate an assault, which is a very good result for the case. I think thirdly, and also just as importantly, Steve has worked on cases and managed to uncover exculpatory evidence or defenses where we've become convinced that we cannot prove the case at trial and without Steve's work, we may not have been able to do that. So, not only are we prosecuting and identifying the real dangerous abusers, we've also managed to identify people who very well may be innocent or who aren't innocent and we've dropped those cases. So, we're allocating resources properly, we're working towards real community safety. Unfortunately, as I'd like to have Steve come up here and discuss, Steve is one man and he has many, many cases that he works on, he simply doesn't have the time for just working on domestic violence because he's working on many, many other things too. So, Steve, if you'd come up and discuss statistics.
Thank you, Adam.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Steve Neville, I'm the criminal investigator at the State's Attorney's Office. I would like to give you just a little bit of a flavor of why getting a full-time allocated domestic violence investigator for the State's Attorney is so important. These domestic violence cases, they're like a mini homicide case and the reason I say that is that with domestic abuse, there is so much information that you can obtain from a domestic violence case, the information is out there. The issue though is, is that it takes an immense allocation of time to go and get that information, it's out there. Let me give you an example. One of the things that I primarily do in these domestic violence cases, one of the first questions I ask the victims is, who are the abuser's former girlfriends? Who are the former spouses? And it's been my experience and I'm guessing, I don't keep statistics, but at least in 70 to 80% of the cases that I worked, there are other domestic abuse victims out there and surprisingly, those domestic abuse victims, even though a lot of those domestic abuse events have never been reported, they will actually talk to me and they will detail inform me the histories of violence that had occurred with the defendant. The reason why we need this so vitally is because in order to treat those domestic violence cases the way that they should, it takes an unimaginable amount of time to go through it properly. And like Anna said, the way we view it is this is homicide prevention. Just to give you a little bit of a flavor of the statistics, last year I was assigned 306 tasks. Now, one task might be from an attorney saying, Steve, I can't find this witness, can you go and try and contact him for me? And then I might end up a half hour and I might find them and that's one task, but then Anna might assign me, Steve, I want you to go through and review this domestic violence case and I want you to see what you can do with it. And I literally could end up with 40, 50, or 60 hours into one case when you include collecting evidence, doing the interviews, doing the typing and the documentation that is necessary. And I'm just one person at the State's Attorney, but I'm available to all the attorneys. The way that I would envision this is that this domestic violence investigator would be specific to the domestic violence prosecutor like Ms. Lindroth. And so, I cannot explain to you how passionately I feel about this because I talk to those victims every day and the information is out there. We just need to go and have the time to go and grab it. Any questions that I can ask?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Raskin.
Where does, what role does the protection orders play in all this?
Well, they're unimaginably important. One of the things that we find is that there are, there are a lot of times where the protection order does exactly what it is supposed to do, the abuser does stay away from the victim or does not contact him. However, in a lot of these cases, they actively go and solicit the victim or threaten the victim, if they testify, I'll do whatever to you. We were just talking about this this morning, we've probably in the last We've probably, in the last year, done about a half a dozen superseding indictments where we found out by listening to jail phone calls where they're violating the protection order, and the victim doesn't feel confident enough, or they're in fear, to where they don't file the report with law enforcement.
So the protection order is one of the tools in your toolbox relative to your goal of helping these victims?
It is. And in those superseding indictments, we charge them with violating the protection order. And in a number of these cases, charging that protection order, that new violation that we otherwise would not have known about but for us listening to jail phone calls, those would have gone unknown. Nobody would know about it. But then the end result is, and Ms. Lindruth might be able to speak more to this than I can, but my view is that that helps us to resolve these cases because you have additional violations on the defendant.
Thank you, and thank you for your dedication to the program.
Of course.
Ms. Hacott.
I appreciate Ms. Lindwood and your passion, Steve. I'm just wondering, most every department could probably use an investigator to save time, energy, and money. I understand the passion with this, but I'm going to be up straight. You have many different people that probably need your help, and you probably use a bunch of investigators in the state's attorney's office. So why would this one be different? And number two, it seems... So when people do the investigation on these people, do they just say, "Well, this is what happened, and that's the report you get, so you guys have to dig into it more"? Is that the issue?
That's one of the things that comes up in my investigations, is that quite frankly, because of my experience of having been an investigator for better part of 20-plus years, a lot of the questions that you need answers to are not initially asked when the initial report comes in. And because of the experience that I've had, I'm actually able to get the answers to those more detailed questions to where someone like Mr. Vargo or Ms. Lindruth can better use that in either resolving the case or later on down the road at trial. Now, to kind of answer your question a little more directly, the reason why this investigator, in my mind, at the state's attorney's office is so important is that the tasks that the investigator does is done directly at the behest of the prosecutors or Mr. Vargo. And I don't have to worry about sitting at my desk that I might get called out on something like another detective or a sheriff's investigator would. My tasks are very succinct, and they're very specific, and I'm able to use that resource for those specific purposes rather than having to worry about what might happen out in the community later that day, or maybe later that week.
Maybe the changes also need to be, when there's domestic violence, there needs to be a different way of moving it forward to the attorney's office. Maybe there's... When you said the reports aren't detailed enough, they don't have enough stuff in them, maybe, and you have to go find some of that, maybe that's some of the job of the people before it hits where it's going to the state's attorney. Why I'm saying that is because we do have investigators. We have people that do that. And what we're doing is we're adding to the state's attorney, investigators, and people that work like in human resources, that we're starting to add a whole different department. If that's a good thing, that's fine in one sense. But the other, Barry has a job, state's attorney has a job, investigators have jobs. Maybe it's what's happening before that. I'm not trying to be mean. But it seems like if I'm an investigator, and things aren't getting done right, should I add it to the state's attorney's office? Or should I add it to the people that maybe are investigating beforehand and train them so they're getting more of those answers before they get to the attorneys? Because I don't... I think most everybody could almost use an investigator in human resources, like the care campus or state's attorneys or public defenders. I think there could be a lot of investigators in that course. And that's why I'm saying that, not that this is not an amazing thing to do and that what you're doing is great. I'm just saying the position, not what you're doing. Does that make sense?
It does. It does.
Let me address that just a little bit, Commissioner, though. Some of the things, because I very much do not want it to sound like we're saying that we're getting bad investigations coming up. Some of the things that Steve ends up investigating could not be known on the night of. There are claims that are made later that the defendant might say, "Oh, well, I was just responding. She's assaulted me in the past." Or somebody else may come to us with additional information. Sometimes when a defendant is in jail, a victim is more willing to step up. And so a former girlfriend or a former spouse might be willing to step up at that moment that they weren't willing at the moment of arrest, or they might not even have been aware of at the time of arrest. So these are things that really can't be done at the street level or even in the immediate investigation, and that's why we feel that it's so important.
But that could be carried on to any trial that you're doing that maybe you didn't get enough information ahead of time because of the night before that people were arrested. That could carry on to almost every case that you're talking about. So...
That's exactly right, and that's why we're focusing in on this one, which has some grant opportunities through VAWA, because that's one mechanism to fund it. I'll be clear that if I were the one that was going to be here in September, I'd be asking for this regardless. But we're actually hoping, obviously, to have this funded outside of the county's general fund through our VAWA grant. But we're expanding that, and that's why we're talking to you today. And the prioritization, when you say everybody could use an investigator, actually, you're looking at them. So when the treasurer's office had an issue here not too long ago, they came to us, and the investigation occurred in-house through Mr. Neville as far as ensuring that we knew what was going on in concert with the sheriff's investigation that was trying to prove whether or not there was actually a criminal act. So we kind of had parallel investigations going, one on county policy and one on criminality. And so this person, though, there at the state's attorney's office, just like our attorneys, go out and interact with all of the various departments. So does our investigator.
So what happens is, I've been here eight years, and a lot of these grants have been becoming full-time people. So are we moving this forward as one investigator, and then we'll get another grant for some other investigators? That's the issue, is that we're building some of these grants into full-time positions, which makes sense. And most of the time, once it's approved, it's very hard to say, "Okay," because we know you're going to do your job, Steve. If you become that investigator, we know Steve's going to do that job thoroughly, and he's going to do a great job. I'm saying, so then we should probably just keep adding investigators, because you know we need them. So because we have a grant, we're going to approve that, and it's going to move forward into a full-time. That's what has happened since I've been in politics, actually, in 15 years, not just eight. So some of that I understand, and others, it's like, holy cow, how big and how many people do we need in one department where we're not coinciding or doing something different to work with the other departments in order to make it more efficient?
Well, it's great to hear you channeling the spirit of Ron Busskerud. But I will also tell you that...
I said it before, Ron Busskerud.
On VAWA, we have not gone backwards. So VAWA, the VAWA grants have not disappeared on us. They are not short-term grants. This isn't a situation where you have a grant for two years or a co-pay on a grant or whatever. Now, that doesn't mean that it can't. Obviously, that's a question of federal politics, and so it's always a danger, anytime you have a grant, that we would come back to you and ask you to say, "Well, we don't have grant funding anymore, but we still need this position." But, and as I said, I believe that this is a position we need regardless of whether or not we get the grant. So what I... The reason we're talking to you is because it is something we'd like to at least explore. And... But I also don't want to mislead you. I don't want to say that in September, somebody's not going to be standing in front of you and saying, "No, no, we need this position regardless," because I think that would happen.
I'm going to go to the rest of the commission. We need to have...
I finish for just a sec? Thank you. So I'm not against grants. I'm not against what you're doing at all. I just am asking the harder questions in order to figure out what's the bottom line. So I knew that was the bottom line, and I don't think that's a bad thing. And Ms. Lindwood and Steve, I think you do amazing jobs. And what you're working at is really, really passionate for you guys, which is awesome. So bottom line is, I just... I always ask the hard questions. And I'm not trying to be... I always play kind of devil's advocate, and Mr. Vargo knows that by now. I'm not against all this. I just wanted to know, with the grant, are we moving forward? And can we expect, bottom line, more investigators and more this being a full-time position? So...
Well, may I add one quick thing?
Yes, sir.
When it comes to being the devil's advocate, kind of the bottom line, the way that I view working on domestic violence cases is, there's a very good chance that some of the DV cases I've worked on, we may have prevented somebody being dead right now.
Thank you. You do a good job, Steve, and I appreciate you being able to take my questions. And I did see you yesterday at the... For jury duty, I saw you running around. I'm like, who is that guy? That's pretty cool that I saw you today. Thank you, Steve.
Okay. Finished?
Yes, thank you.
Any other commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
I got one more comment before I go. I think there's dual purposes on this. A lot of times, we've heard about how this is investigating more of what happened to the victim. But I think in the other case, on the flip side, it prevents a false claim also. There's nothing more damaging than something of a false claim being made. So I think the work that you guys do also includes that. I think we never really touched... You touched on that a little bit at the beginning of this, but I think that's very important also.
We've... I've worked on a number of cases where, flat out, there were false claims made and to where people had, in fact, been arrested. And based upon the investigation that I did, we dismissed those charges. And so it does work on both sides.
Yes. I just wanted to express that, because we focus too much, and that is a pretty damaging thing for that. So I wanted to pass... Mr. Ralston.
Mark, we don't know the longevity of the grant. But with that being said, assuming the grant was good for three years, could you put a value to the grant? I mean, just ballpark? There's got to be a pretty significant value to that, wouldn't it? At the 100% and 65%?
I'm going to help you here. So, well, it would be 100%. So one of the things about a VAWA grant is that we're required to have people on those grants who only work on those type of cases. So some of our grants, the VOCA, the Victims Crime Act, the Violence Against Women Act requires it to be 100% VOCA. We can say, "Well, you're going to do 50% of your work on VOCA cases and 50% of your work." And then we obviously have to document what we're doing. VAWA is simpler in the sense that they only work on that. So would it be the entire cost of the investigator with all of the various things that go along with that? So the collateral cost to it. So bottom line is...
Ballpark figure, 80?
So about 80 a year, about a quarter million dollars, if we can get it.
Including rules.
I was just trying to put a dollar sign to that, so thank you.
Rough, but probably pretty close.
Yeah. But there is value. If you need the service, there is value there.
There is.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Now, I go back to the commission. Any further comment or motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to grant authorization to apply for the STOP-VWA and the VOCA grants.
We have a motion. And a second from Mr. Drews. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Joan, do we have Melissa and Molly, the applicants, online? Okay. I would look for a motion to bring the Wild Springs Solar LLC utility permit application back up off the table. Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Lassiter. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do we have any more? Hi, is this Molly?
This is. Good morning, commissioners. Thank you. Didn't want to interrupt. Would you like me to go ahead and provide an overview?
Yes, Molly, just give your name and title, and you may present.
Certainly. My name is Molly Smith. I'm with Fredrickson &amp; Byron, and I'm here on behalf of Wild Springs. What we have before you today is an application for utility crossing permits. And the situation is that there is a statute that requires the Board of County Commissioners to approve crossings of roads and section lines in South Dakota. And we understand the county's process and preference is to have that initially go through the highway superintendent, which is what we have done here. But to meet that statutory requirement, we have presented an application that includes all of those approvals and are asking for, basically, your approval under the statute 3126 for those approvals. And in part, this is kind of on us. We have to, when the project goes through financing, it has to be able to prove that it's gotten all of the approvals that it needs. And this happens to be one that it has to demonstrate that it has. And so that's why we're before you today.
Thank you, Molly. Is there any questions for Molly from the commission?
I do, sir.
Ms. Hacott.
Because this has been vetted through the highway and our highway department and superintendent and assistant superintendent really go through these thoroughly, Melissa... What was her name?
Molly.
Molly. Call to Melissa. Sorry, Ms. Molly.
Not a problem.
I'm on board with this. And then I did read the statute from something else we had dealt with before. So I'm in favor of this today, and I think the solar power will be awesome to see how that works and what it does for western South Dakota. So, thank you.
Finished?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
I'll just make a comment on this one. I'd encourage you all to come out there on 160 First and see how the process is going. Y'all know that that's my district, and that's not where I live. And the process is moving right along. So I'd encourage you all to come out and see the process of this new solar plant. And if you have any questions, it's always good to ask us and visit with them.
Any public discussion or questions? Seeing none, I go back to the commission.
Move approval?
Move approval. A second.
Okay. So the motion was to approve the utility permit application for Wild Springs Solar LLC for 10 collection lines crossing as printed, presented by... And this motion was by Hacott, seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Sorry. Motion approved. Next, we come to items from the building committee. Recognized senior construction project manager, Kevin Burton.
Kevin Burton, construction manager. Before you today, to give the building commission or building committee's recommendation, they had allowed a review committee for the RFP process for the design of the 900 Concourse Building. We... You guys had approved that proposal process on January 3rd's meeting. We did finish that. We did interviews last Friday. Sorry about any short notice we gave you for that award recommendation. We would like to recommend awarding to TSP, a local firm. Both firms were very well-qualified. A little bit of the reasoning that we had that kind of edged TSP over the other company was they had very similar experience to what we're looking at for our 900 Concourse Building. They have remodeled Rapid City Hall. They also did Sioux Falls and Watertown. So they're very familiar with multiple row offices and public setting. They... All of their disciplines, engineering, mechanical design, planning, all of those things are under one roof. So there's really good collaboration within their department, and they're not using a lot of subs. So communication and everything flows really well interdepartmentally. They have a dedicated full-time estimator. So that's really beneficial for us rather than to have a design firm going before asking local contractors to help them estimate a project. Having a third-party estimator, they've got no skin in the game. Contractors may, you know, work that one way or the other with their estimating to see how they can work getting in on our jobs. And a third-party estimator really is... Trying to find the right word. Anyway, they're above board. So they're not trying anything funny. Also liked that when they... When we were in the interview process, they didn't address just the interior space, but they were also looking at the exterior. They were looking at how we approached the building, how to mitigate snow, wind, all of those things on that. And that was an element that the other firm did not approach, was the site itself. the site itself. So as a recommendation, we're just recommending today, bringing this up. And we'll be returning next board meeting to ask to move forward with schematic design, design process.
Thanks, Kevin. I'll just repeat that, you know, no motion today. This is informational and then, and presentation. And then you, the actual approval will be on our March 21st, 2023 agenda for final action. So any questions for?
Mr. Chair.
Kevin, Mr. Ross.
Going forward, we're going to put a lot of emphasis on using everything we can in that building to its fullest to keep costs down, such as the current HVAC system and all the equipment or FFNE in there. And there's a significant amount of FFNE. And so I think Kevin agree that we really want to use as much of that as we can and, and not go out there and buy stuff. And then, so we're going to put a lot of emphasis on that going forward.
Okay. Ms. Haddock.
So when I was reading this, the RFP recipient log, the ARC International had the 79 score and TSP had 70. So on the interview, that changed because it was local or you were saying some of the stuff, Kevin. So just can you reiterate why that one went over the other?
So we base the score strictly on the written proposals that were received. So ARC did a very, very admirable job in matching their proposal to the request of the RFP in a order that made it very easy to find all that information. ARC, TSP had all of that information within their proposal, but it wasn't as easy to possibly decipher. It was, it was a little bit in more of their narrative and that kind of stuff. When we got into the interview process, they were very precise, very consistent. They answered the questions very directly and very clear. Really liked several of their approaches. They were less money for their schematic design, but also their approach to the way they described their approach of learning how this organization functions. As they come in, they meet with the director in the morning. They observe that department through the day and then they return to a meeting in the evening with the director. That gives them.
That's TSP you're talking about?
TSP, correct. Yeah, it's one of the things that was, was a driving force from my perspective that allowed them to move beyond ARC's score.
More felt like part of the team and you were part of that team instead of just saying, we're going to do this and still meet with you and everything. But these guys, it just sounds like from listening to you, Kevin, they sound, TSP sound like more team, more interaction, which I think I like with anything I do, whether it's building something or, or doing anything I do. So.
Yeah, that reasoning that I gave was from the committee and that was all what they saw and felt within that interview process, which put them above ARC.
I appreciate that. I just wondered why that came about in the end when you picked the other one. So.
It was, it was a very, very, very close call. I mean, both firms are very, very good firms. I think either one, we, we cannot go wrong with either one of those firms. It was just one of those things where one team did a little better on their proposal process, one team did a lot better in the interview process.
Thank you, Kevin.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
And another thing that ARC had in its favors that, not ARC, but TSP was that under one roof, they have this estimator and they have their electrical engineer, the mechanical engineer, then they, they, the rest of the group, it's all under one roof. And with ARC, they work with Skyline, but they're not under one roof. So you got to make telephone calls and Zoom meetings. And ARC didn't really have an onsite estimator. And I think that estimator is very important because every change going forward, that estimator is going to say, this is what it's going to cost you. Do you want to do that? So I think it's a paramount that that estimator is part of this puzzle going forward.
Thank you, Kevin. Any further questions for Kevin?
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we come to items from equalization. I'll recognize Director Sean Reddick.
Good morning. Any questions on the abatements?
Oh, your tie and your shirt looks nice, Dave.
Mr. Drews.
To approve the abatement applications for tax year 2022 for the following parcels. Evelyn Cumberworth, number 27092, in the amount of $1,012.64. Russell M. Moon, number 25713, in the amount of $736.60. South Dakota Ellsworth Development Parcel, number 71886, the amount of $29.14. And the city of Box Elder, number 40102, the amount of $1,388.58.
We, we have a motion.
Second.
Motion by Drews, seconded by Roskneck. Any public discussion? Any from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Next we come to items from the fire administrator, Jerome Harvey.
Good morning, commissioners. Jerome Harvey, fire administrator, Penny County, South Dakota. With me today, we have Val Newman, our admin in the office and Chief Hartman from the DOD volunteer fire department. Again, appreciate all of the help and support and direction the commission gives us. I recognize our fire commissioner, Deb Haggock, for everything she does for us. I'm going to pick on you a little bit, Lloyd. Remember, one of the first things we talked about back in 2016 was what kind of a platform and issues were we going to work on going forward. And I was looking at some of my notes from way too long ago. And something that always bothered me is we really didn't have a way to progress our younger people forward to find out what they need to do to run a fire department, to reference a fire department, what they got to do with the state and the county and so on and so forth. Because basically people, our younger officers, firefighters that are coming up, have to learn that off the cuff. We don't do a nice job of passing on our institutional knowledge that is gained by that. A lot goes on in managing and taking care of a fire department. One of the things I started working on a long time ago and was able to finally start working on it in, in earnest when I came back. And we were finally able to pull it together with the help of the commission, putting Val into the county fire office whole time, able to pull these things together. And we have our first version of an actual reference manual. We have some reference copies for you to look at up there. We do need to, do need to get these back. And we're going to do a little, little Bill Gates with them. We're going to get them out to the fire departments and have them make any comments, suggestions, changes, et cetera. And what this does is give a, a reference manual, gives a manual that, that is a living document, can be updated, can be kept up to date, will have all the basic stuff that you need to have to run a fire department. And there is nothing like this that I can find in the five-state region. And we have some of our personnel in our fire departments are very good with this information. And the manual won't make an immediate impact, but it'll give them a reference point to help the people coming up behind them. And once a year, we'll bring the manual back in to the office. We'll update it with the information. We'll make any changes, the suggestion that, that go on with it. And eventually, hopefully within a year, we'll be able to have our departments be able to download it and access it off of our internet or internet website to help keep it up. But it's a, it's a place that they can go to. It's a place for all the basic things that you need to reference in the running of a fire department.
I love it.
You members talking about this, Lloyd? This, before I turn over to Chief Hartman, having Val come up and you guys doing the help of us getting Val in here, the documents were, were, a lot of the documents were built inside the server, but they were scattered in various different areas that they needed to be. And I was, wasn't able to get the horsepower to pull it all together until you guys put Val into the office. And I appreciate that. And it's one of our heavy lift projects that we're working on this year so that we have something that can be passed on and help our departments guide them. So again, and I'm, you know, it's a little rah rah here, but it's the only one that I can find in the five-state region.
Damon Hartman, DOD fire chief. Basically, it ends up, most of the fire departments are, if you don't make the meeting, that's when you get elected chief. And a lot of them start from scratch, trying to figure out how to do stuff. Having a manual like this put together definitely helps. Some of us old guys that even were at the meeting got elected chief. But anyway, having this, it allows us as chiefs to train the upcoming personnel to make it a lot smoother on a fire ground. If they get on a scene, okay, I'm running into this, who do I contact? It's, we've got some information in there from state wildland as well, state fire marshal's office. So we're trying to encompass everything we can. Val and Jerome asked me to help with a few of the items. And we're just trying to get a good consensus across of all the fire chiefs. So this is sort of the information they, they wish they had when they started as chief. And this way we can try to pass it on, make it a little smoother transition for a new chief to come in. I think it's a good step forward. Like Jerome said, is there's going to be tweaking throughout from year to year on it, which needs to happen. It's a living document. We're going to have to change it as we go. So.
Chairman.
Ms. Haddock.
I think this reference manual is, is pretty awesome. Chief Hartman, Val, you're a major, let me say, asset to this committee and to this department of the volunteer fire departments. Because every time there's a need to do or need to go to, you two have always been there and you get things done. So with our fire administrator, who has a passion for anything to do with fire and you two's help, I believe we can do anything and we have moved forward in the, in a big way in everything we've done. And you two, Chief Hartman and Val, you're a part of that team that makes that happen. So thank you to all three of you. We've come a long ways from the beginning of a fire administrator and, and what has happened with this volunteer fire department. So you guys have been part of that. And Chief Hartman, you don't give yourself enough credit for what you do. So he has been an asset a lot longer than most of us in this, this department. So thank you for all you do.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskneck.
Jerome, yeah, I'm really impressed. I mean, this is great. And each fire department's going to get it. They're, they're going to have the same information.
Yes.
It'll get updated when it needs to get updated. But I was thinking, is there, I don't see the area for training, like the training requirements to be a volunteer firefighter?
The training, there's a, a section in there for the training calendars and the training referencing back. We maintain a training calendar. And then there's a section in there, there's a couple of sections in there that are not in there. And part of that is referencing back to the fire marshal's office and any training that they have there for our structural firefighting, wildland firefighting. We did meet with the fire marshal's office and state wildland to make some changes on that. And that's going to the binder format. We can come in and, you know, update that and stick that in there.
So relative to the training, what, I don't know the different terms, but to be a firefighter certified, what does that entail?
If the departments decide to go down the route and, and how the firefighters become certified firefighters, the class, the course is anywhere from 80 to 120 hours as far as the structural firefighting piece. The county supports that. We do one to two classes a year to support that, along with some support from the fire marshal's office and across the local fire departments. On top of that, it's about another 16 to 24 hours as far as our wildland training and our first aid training. So you're looking at anywhere from 140 to 160 hours for them to become certified, both structural firefighting with some rescue work in that and with the wildland piece in that.
Is there a benefit when you get that certificate for those completion hours relative to insurance or anything?
Congratulations, you passed. Here's your certificate, suitable for framing. There is, there, it is as far as there, we had a gentleman here the other day completed it and he was hired into a, a, a much better job position he was trying to get into because of that. So there's a lot of life benefits to it. As far as if you go through the state certification and go that route, there isn't necessarily an equivalency as far as college and you know, on those lines. Some places will give that to you as far as credit for that. But it's a lot of life experiences and, and employers are looking for some of those type of skills, whether it be safety training, safety brigades within plants or, or whatever. So there's, there are side benefits to that.
And my last statement would be, I don't know that the normal layperson would have any idea what it costs to equip one firefighter. And if I recall, it's about $8,000.
Yeah, easily anywhere from, your basic personal protective issue depending on the, on the frame of the person itself can be $6,000 to $8,000. Your breathing apparatus is in excess of $15,000. Your portable radio is going to be excess of $3,000 to $4,000 and your costs go on. The personal protective equipment, the actual structural firefighting equipment in the wildland, the basic nomex or protective clothing, that's got a 10-year lifespan along with the helmets. Do you have any comments on that?
The biggest thing is every 10 years, you have to replace most of that gear. Even though unfortunately for us as a volunteer, we don't go in, in as many fires. So we don't really degrade the equipment that's fast. But still NFPA requires every 10 years. So unfortunately, it's a cost that the departments have to look at. Cause if I send someone in on my department that has a gear that's 11 years old, then I'm in trouble and our department's in trouble. So it's a constant cost that we have to look at replacing gear periodically. And then for most volunteer departments, there's not a lot of funding there. So we hit it hard. And so we're sketching, trying to stretch it out over a lot of years, buying a couple sets now and a couple sets later. But yet eventually it's going to come back and bite us. So it's a nonstop tool out there for us.
Well, I want to say thank you for taking the time to put that together. I think that's going to help all the volunteer fire departments in our district or area.
I, I want to thank you guys. That, that's amazing. You know, I, I come from manufacturing world where we do kaizen improvements and just in times. And that's what they do. That's something, something to reduce steps you have and has standard operating procedure. And that's kind of what this, this is beautiful. I mean, this is going to be able to give your, your employees something that they can refer to. And as you said, Mr. Hartman, it's a living document. You can add it, change it, rework it. You can even make smaller versions, something different version. So I think this is outstanding work that you guys have done. And I'm really impressed.
Thank you.
Is there any further comments? Thank you, guys. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you for your service.
Next we come to items from the highway department. Now I'll recognize Superintendent Joe Miller.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pancton County Highway Department. Item A up in front of you here is authorization to purchase corrugated metal pipe off of the Beetle County bid, something we've done for many, many years. Beetle County's just got the bid because True North Manufacturing is in Beetle County. All the specs meet the requirements that we put forth. 2019, 2018 and 2019, we purchased about $25,000. We haven't purchased any in the last couple of years, other than for our Willsey Road project. We do look at probably updating our inventory again this year. So we look to purchase more than that $25,000. So with that, don't stand for any questions.
Is there any questions for Joe?
Chairman.
Ms. Haddock.
Just a question for the board. He has to come in here for pipes, salt, gravel. I think that's crazy. Okay. So I understand big purchases. I understand bridges because we want to know what's happening. Some of these roads that we need to know what's happening, if we're taking them off, putting them on, or just big improvement. But I don't know if there's anything this board or we could do that I think Joe can, and most of these departments can run efficient, effective. They're going to have to because of their budgets. And I don't think they're going to take high bids or, or bids that don't make sense. But just wondering if we could look at in the future, doing something where we're not approving pipe and salt and gravel and things for different departments.
Ms. Haddock, I was actually going to bring that up. When it comes time for items from chairs and commission to maybe ask our staff to review that, to have a consent agenda for, if, if we can do a consent agenda with some of the stuff from highway.
Yeah, or even like some of the departments like Mike Coles Department, some of these purchases, I don't know if we can up the purchase or something. So they're not having to come. And they could be doing other things sometimes, not staying here explaining all this. Some of these things in other departments, they run efficient, effective budgets. And if they don't, it comes back on them. Like I said, some of that stuff we need to see and other stuff, it's like, just run a good department, you know? And if you don't, that comes back on them.
Right. Currently, I think there's a motion on the books that allows the highway department to purchase up to $10,000. Connie and I have actually been looking at upping that, that dollar amount here for the last couple of years, just because things have gotten more and more expensive. couple of years, just because things have gotten more and more expensive, and I don't remember if it was a Senate bill or a House bill, actually just went through the state of South Dakota legislature to increase the amount that's requirement for bidding. I think it went up to 50 and 100,000, don't quote me on that right now, but they did up the limit, so you'll be seeing something from us in the next couple of meetings to increase that, just basically update that motion for the Highway Department.
And put that maybe out to other departments that might be more efficient and effective, maybe Ms. Holly, if you could look into that, without having to come up here for things that runs the department or something that we know they have to have every year, and it's just a no-brainer, meaning we know you got it, you got to get it, and it's going to be in their budget anyway, so.
Yeah, I think we could probably go and consent agenda some of this stuff, so.
Okay. We need to get back to our agenda.
Thank you, Lloyd, for that point of privilege.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to authorize the purchase of corrugated metal pipe from True North Steel here in South Dakota, utilizing the Beetle County, South Dakota bid awarded in January 3, 2023.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Hancock, any public discussion? Any more from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number B.
Item number B is the, an amendment to the professional service agreement for the Highway 1416 bridge replacement design engineering, so currently KLJ has completed the preliminary engineering, which is the hydraulics and size of the structure, so now we need to move on to designing both of these structures. The current timeline is 2023, we're going to get this design applied for the big grants or bridge improvement grants in 2024, so January, and then for construction in 2025.
Any questions for Joe?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Laster.
Move to approve Amendment 1 to the professional services agreement with KLJ Engineering LLC for bridge design engineering for Highway 1416 bridge replacements, not to exceed the fee of $108,300.
Second.
Moved by Lasters, seconded by Hancock, any public discussion? Any more from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number C, Joe.
Item C, this is a professional service agreement also with KLJ for the preliminary or for the preservation design engineering, so with the restrictions or the, lost for words. The big grant program requires us to pick a firm off of their list to do these designs. We used to do a lot of these designs in-house, but with applying for big grants, we can no longer do that. So these are four bridges that are up for preservation. Again, the timeline is we'll do the design in 2023, apply in January of 2024 for construction in 2025, so we definitely learned a lot the last couple of years, that these things take a little bit longer than we'd like, but we are actively working with the state to try and improve their process going forward, so. The structures on this one are Deerfield Road, Forest Road, Norris Peak Road, and Lower Spring Creek Road.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions for Joe from the commission? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion from the commission.
Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to approve the professional services agreement 2303 hyphen 00174 with KLJ Engineering LLC for design engineering for four bridges, four bridge preservation projects, and not to exceed fee of $50,000.
It's been moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Roskin. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number D.
Item D, this is an award recommendation for fence on South Rochford Road, 2023. We opened sealed bids, of which we only received one sealed bid from Elite Fabrication LLC in the amount of $277,648. So a little backstory, I think I told this when we came for authorization to bid this, we have a fencing contractor that's on basically retainer or on standby for us if somebody were to hit a fence and take out a right-of-way fence, they come in and replace that, and the plan was to do this under our annual bid, and our contractor was, had started it, then pulled off, went to another project, and then informed us, I believe it was in September or October, that he wasn't going to be able to get this completed, so with that being said, we want to keep the cows out of the project, which is set for letting on March 22, so we're trying to get the grazing, the cattle going to certain pastures June and July, so we're trying to get ahead of that so we can keep the cattle out of the project and out of the right-of-way, so. It's a little backstory on this, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions from Joe?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Move to award FNC 2023 fencing South Rochford Road to Elite Repair and Fabrication LLC Rapid City, South Dakota on the amount of $277,648.32.
Moved by Roskin, accepted by Drews. Is there any public comment? Any further comment from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number E.
Item E, resolution designating 153th Street as no maintenance, so this is per your direction at the February 7 meeting, we drafted the following resolution to designate 153rd as a no-maintenance road.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Hancock, seconded by Lassiter. Did you read the resolution?
He did.
Did he? Okay. Any public comment? Any more from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item F.
Item F, this is a transportation planning process amendment that was in front of the MPO and approved by them, so now we just need to approve our portion of it. Bottom line is, the cost came in about $110,000 over what was originally budgeted. Box Elder and Pennington County are splitting the 18.05% match, so county's portion of that is about $8,500, bringing the total from 18,000, approximately $18,000 up to $27,907. This is to move the process forward on the Highway 1416 Radar Hill corridor study. They've sent out a poll, little update, I guess, on where it's at. KLJ has got, they've awarded that contract to KLJ, and we've got a pre-construction meeting or kickoff meeting scheduled sometime in April. They currently sent out a poll for all the stakeholders to see when the timing is available for that, so when I get the set time, I know Travis would probably like to be there.
I was about to put a note on there to let me know, so thank you.
I will, I will let you know, looking at 11th, 12th, 13th right now of April is kind of where they're at, so.
Any questions for Joe on this? Any public comment? Go back to the commission for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Move to approve the amendment to, let me chairman on the right one here, move to approve the amendment to the agreement with the city Rapid City for accomplishing the Rapid City area transportation planning process to allow for a corridor study for Highway 1416 and Radar Hill Road with a maximum limiting amount of $27,907 for Pennington County.
Moved by Lassiter.
Second.
Seconded by Roskin. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Next, we are on item 19, items from Human Resources. Recognize Director Carol Bancroft.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Bancroft, Pennington County HR Director. The first item is that we have conflicting policies, and this became apparent when we had facilities closures, that the facilities closure policy, which is 2.15, indicates that employees can use any of their paid leave time, and it uses an example such as vacation time, but it doesn't go on to elaborate further. But the understanding of that policy is that paid leave time also encompasses sick leave time. So then that leads to looking at the sick leave policy, which is very explicit about saying that it could be used for any medical conditions or mental health conditions, period. So working with Commissioner Hancock, that what we're requesting is that we would revise the, make an update to the sick leave policy to also include as far as that it could be used for facilities closures. So the motion could read as follows, that I move to approve the revision to Policy 4.3, sick leave to add or to cover unpaid hours during facilities closures.
Thank you, Carol. Is there any questions from the commission for Carol?
No questions. Bottom line is to use the sick and vacation pay for facility closures is what this is about, so this wasn't just me and Carol, this was our compensation committee, had many or a lot of discussion on this, and that was the bottom line for all of us. So it also says, or with department head approval, lost time may be made up with the work, the work as defined. So with department head approval, it also can be made up within the work week as well, so, just so the employees are listening to that as well, so it's not just sick or vacation pay. If your department head is in approval with it, you can make up your time that you have missed, and I don't know how each department does it, but that would be work, what do you call it, work rules? So we got that term from Ms. Carol, so it's not policy, it's work rule per department, so.
Mr. Chair.
Bottom line is, I'm in favor of this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hancock and Mr. Drews.
I'd move the approval of the policy as presented by Human Relations.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Hancock, and let me, just let me confirm the motions. The motion would be to approve the revision of Policy 4.36 with an immediate effective date, adding or to cover unpaid hours during facility closures. That, okay, just clarifying. Any public comment on this from the audience? Any further discussion from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, now we're on to the next item.
Yes, the next item is a recommendation on Policy 3.18, which is compensation administration as it applies to the category of promotions policy. So the Compensation Committee met to review this policy and to clarify as far as with promotions, and what the sentiment was that we brought forth with this recommendation is that we could have someone who had been hired within their first 90 days, but there was an opening for a position that they were equally qualified for that was a promotion, and we wouldn't want to deny that individual that opportunity to advance because it didn't make good sense for the business either. If we've got an internal candidate who's qualified, but they're within their 90 days, that we would not want to limit that they could not be promoted. And so to revise the policy, that our recommendation is to remove the last sentence, which refers to the three-month restriction for promotions under the Promotions Bullet as follows, that promotions may not occur until the employee has worked a minimum of three continuous calendar months in their current role. So adopting that as a proposed revision to the policy is the recommendation of the Compensation Committee, and as such, it cannot be acted upon until the following meeting.
So we're going to, this informational for us, first hearing, and it will be on our 21st agenda.
Correct.
Is there any questions for Carol on this?
Mr. Chair, I just want to say my hats off to the Compensation Committee. It's certainly making things a lot smoother for us commissioners, so I appreciate that.
It's a very collaborative effort, and it was a very wise decision by the commission to form the Compensation Committee, so thank you.
Thank you. Just kidding. It was Lloyd, I'm just teasing him.
Any further questions for Carol?
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
Not really for Carol, but we're making a lot of revisions, and we said we wanted like to have a department head, you know, so we could keep everybody updated, and we could start showing them the revisions and let them visit with them, but I think also we should probably have an employee one as well, so I think that would alleviate a lot of the, you know, we're making a lot of changes, so they know it's not making it less than, it's actually revising it to be more positive. So any way that we could do that, I think is good, maybe have a public meeting on it or something, I don't know how you do that, but or just have employees, I don't know how that works, Ms. Carol, but I think it'd be beneficial, so the employees understood that, you know, I know the department heads, they're busy and sometimes they might miss a few things, but just the revisions, there's a lot, so both sides, I think, need some type of HR meeting to kind of update them. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Carol.
Okay, moving along to item number B.
Yes, so Policy 3.14, which is the safe harbor policy, that the Compensation Committee requests board approval for the revisions to the Policy 3.14 safe harbor, and the motion could read as follows, that I move to approve the recommended revisions by the Compensation Committee to Policy 3.14 safe harbor with an immediate effective date as it relates to eliminating the requirement for partial day absences for exempt employees requiring a four-hour minimum deduction from employees accrued benefit time.
Thank you, Carol. Is there any questions for Carol on this? Any questions from the public? Back to the commission.
Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd make that as a motion.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Hancock. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Next, we have item number 21, which is the Eastern Pennington County Ambulance District. This comes to us from Commissioner Travis Laster. Do you want me to let Jerome, would you like, let me let Mr. Laster address this first, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to kind of, y'all received the memorandum to understand kind of what's going on, it's an overall synopsis. I've asked Jerome and Lily Stone to be here to help answer if there's any questions concerning this funding request for this assessment. Really, several weeks ago, Lily Stone reached out to me with some concerns, she's new on the board, and Lily, can you tell us how long you've been on that board?
Four months.
Four months, and the longest standing member on that board currently is about eight months, so they're a fairly new board, there's been a big turnover in that, and so they came to us with a funding concern, when it looks like they are over budget for what's going on in the district based on the needs and whatnot, so after conversations, Jerome and myself went down there and visited with the board, the mayor, to kind of see what's going on, the city of Wall did add $46,000 more to their annual allotment to the Wall District, Wall Ambulance District, but we think that there needs to be an assessment done there, and while I actually think at Jerome's request, there should be an assessment for all of Pennington County, however, with this particular entity with them being shortfall and maybe not have enough funds come September, we might want to get on this one first, see what kind of data we get back from it, and then consider even a countywide one in the future, but that's something for us to consider later. So at this point, I'd like for Jerome Harvey or Lily Stone to be available to you for questions, if y'all have any questions about what's going on, and move forward from there.
Well, thank you, Mr. Laster, and for your communication in the last few weeks on this, so that was very helpful. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Harvey.
Appreciate it. Commissioners Jerome Harvey, Penning County Fire Administrator, and with me is Mrs. Stone from the Eastern Pennington County Ambulance District, and Mr. Hoffman, also from the district, and we have Val Newman in the back there. The district has requested help with the study, we have been in contact with the proposed study, the same people that are doing the study, that are proposed to do this study are the same people who are doing the statewide assessment. The statewide assessment would not zero in on the Wall Ambulance District, as you see it on the map there. There's, for a future study, I would recommend us waiting to see what comes out of the statewide study, out of this study, and then we can consolidate that information and see what we can pick up from these one, different studies. We have been working with providing technical assistance to the district and to the ambulance service itself, I've been a lot of back and forth as far as information exchange, trying to assist the district, get itself up to speed, having, again, having visit with the gentleman himself, the fact that he's trusted to do the statewide district. I do believe this is a good move forward for the district and for the county to be involved in this. It's a huge issue, we've talked with you before about the issue going on in our volunteer services, EMS, fire, search and rescue, this is a huge issue, it's not just here. I don't want to just say that this is solely an issue going on in Eastern Pennington County Ambulance District, we're seeing this worldwide, this is hitting here, and really, I think, you've heard me say this before, and I've said this publicly in the Capitol, I really believe we're on the other side of this thing, and we need to, we need to take some steps to get ahead of it. We'll continue to provide whether technical We'll continue to provide whether technical assistance and help we can give the district, who can act as a medium between the county commission and the district, help keep that flow of information going and make sure the information that comes out of there benefits the taxpayers and the residents in the district and in the county as much as possible. So whatever you guys want to do there. I'd ask Mrs. Stone if she has anything to add.
Thank you, Jerome. And Stone?
Well, I don't have much to add. We do have an issue. In a state of emergency, I probably should say, we are grateful for the city of Wall. They contributed $96,000 this year just to help us to get through, and we can actually work on things because there is a lot to work on. We are, we're not going to have funds available to operate probably past September or October. That's why right now we're working on what we could do to make it work. And this is one of the steps we want to take. Because just like Travis said, we're pretty brand new. We don't have much history. We just need somebody, we need a third party to come in and look at it and tell us what the issues are and what we need to do. It's, we need some kind of a guide for us to do it, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. We do have, do we have Mary, the mayor from Wall? I would go for, I would recognize Mary Williamson, the mayor from Wall. She's on.
Good, good morning, gentlemen, and thank you for allowing us to come before you. It's very important to the city and the community of Wall, the whole district, to keep, what I say, keep our ambulance on its wheels. And so we are very supportive of this request to get this comprehensive study done so that the, the board actually can take effective, practical steps and that comes from professional guidance on how to, to get us kind of straightened out and moving forward. As we have been told, Wall ambulance is extremely important. Many of our calls go to interstate. And so it's important statewide that we keep this ambulance functioning to help with just the tourist industry, not only here in town, but also on interstate. So we would really appreciate your serious consideration of this request, one-time request to help the ambulance service move ahead to get some very accurate information.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Mayor, Mayor, Mayor. I want to say Mayor Mary. Mayor Williams. Thank you. Just for clarification, what's before us right now is to, they're asking for funding in the amount of 15,000 for the completion of the comprehensive assessment from the Eastern Pennington County Ambulance District. And the second part that's coming up would be coming from the commission's contingency fund. So it's, it's not out of general fund. So I just wanted to get, clarify that as before we move forward. Is there any questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
So I understand the current funding mechanism for the ambulance. It's, I see 155,000 from the county.
Correct.
And that's the district, right?
Yep, it's a target district money.
Does the city, I see 50,000 from the city, and then another 46,000 above that to kind of get you moving along here. And then this 15,000 would help give you a roadmap how you need to be going in the future.
Correct.
So that, funding from the city, is that just 50,000 annually, or can, does that change any?
No, when the district was established in 2012, the city had a resolution. They're going to give us annually 50,000 dollars. It's never has changed. They give us extra 46, just like you said, this year, just to get us through certain time, just close the gap.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to add to that. Not only do they do the 50,000, they also support by providing the ambulance, which is about a $1,200 a month ambulance payment, and they provide the structure there as well, right? The facility for the ambulance services. So they provide a little bit more than just the 50,000.
Sure. No, I think the ambulance service is every bit as important as a fire service, so I'm in full support of this 15,000.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Drews.
So I would totally agree with Mayor Williams and what Jerome Harvey had to say relative to the need that's out there. It doesn't make any difference where you're at, as Jerome pointed out, worldwide situation here. Anytime that you're dealing with services that are primarily through voluntary individuals of providing that service, there's a lot of certification and education acts to go into both of these, ambulance and fire. And so it's difficult to generate the dollars needed. And simple to say, well, why don't you collect more money from those people that you're, that are actually using the service? Well, the collection comes after the fact because of the services that are, type of services that are being provided. And that collection is not an easy way of funding your operation. So I think, you know, for the Wall Ambulance, trying to get back to actually having a roadmap as to what they need to be doing and stuff, this assessment is very critical. And so I favor this also.
Chairman.
Ms. Hagcock.
Move to approve the funding in an amount of 15,000 for the completion of a comprehensive assessment for Eastern Pennington County Ambulance District.
Second.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Mr. Lauster. Is there any public comment? Any further comment from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry.
Mr. Chair. I was just going to add, in my district, we got the Hill City Ambulance Service, and they're going through the same thing, just struggling to keep the doors open and keep the tires on the ambulance. So appreciate your service.
Next, we have item B, which is the resolution.
Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, I heard Deb first. Deb?
Move to approve Resolution 2023-C1.
Second.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Lauster. Any public comment? Seeing none, any further from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Deb, Travis.
Next, we come up to items from the public. I have no speaker request forms. So at this time, I would look for the commission to take a break while planning sets up their computer for board of adjustments.
I'll move for a 10-minute break.
Second.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Lauster, take a 10-minute break. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We're back from break. I'd look for a motion to go into the board of adjustments.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Lauster, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'll recognize Director Brittany Molliter.
Good morning, Commissioners Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. Item A is variance VA 23-03 to reduce the setback to the north lot line from 25 feet to eight feet for an existing shed. The applicant is Catherine Brandiger. The location is 13090 Mission Hills Loop. The lot consists of 2.05 acres, and it is own rural residential district. When staff considers variance, we take a two-pronged approach, and I will just read the findings. No, the requested setback is eight feet from the north lot line. The existing shed is located eight feet from the property line per the applicant's survey. No, rural residential districts require a 25-foot setback from home property lines. No, the zoning ordinance requires a 25-foot setback in a rural residential district. No, the future land use of the property is rural residential district, which requires a 25-foot setback from home property lines. And no, the requested setback of eight feet should have no impact on the safety, health, and general welfare of the public. The location of the shed was chosen to provide maximum allowable travel to fire response crews in support of wildland fire mitigation response plan developed for the property through the South Dakota Fire Hazard and Fuels Reduction Program. Problem two, does a special condition exist? Yes, topography limits the buildable area on this property. The property slopes up approximately 80 feet east to west from 4460 to 4540. And then if a special condition exists, does enforcing the ordinance create an unnecessary hardship? Yes, the sloping topography and existing wildland fire mitigation create a limited building envelope on the property. And finally, if a special circumstance exists, does granting the variance observe the ordinance spirit while doing substantial justice? Yes, granting this variance will allow the existing shed to remain in its current location and ensure wildland fire mitigation response plan is not impacted. So I'll just give you an idea of, like, here's the structure. You can see the approximate location of the lot line. It's about eight and a half feet from the current property line. If you do look at this property, it does slope down. And with the current fire mitigation plan and access roads, it would, there's limited building envelope on that property. So staff is recommending approval of this variance with two conditions.
Thank you, Brittany. Is there any questions for Brittany from the commission?
So Brittany, when was this constructed at that location?
It was, this is an existing structure, so this is going to bring it into compliance. I'm not exactly sure the exact date of construction. There was no building permit submitted for it. So this would allow them to get a building permit if the variance was approved.
Any further questions in the poll?
So just wanted to follow. Do we know if the existing property owners put it there, or was it there when they bought the property?
I do not know the answer to that. They are in the audience.
Ms. Catherine?
Yes.
You're more than welcome to come up and answer that question. Just identify yourself for the record. You're the applicant.
I'm Catherine Brandiger. And as far as the, when the shed was put up, my husband and I have owned this property since 1977. And the shed was brought in probably, I'm guessing, maybe 2009? And I think I can guess pretty well on that because something happened in 2007, and the shed was not there at that time.
I think we got that article in our paper.
Yes. This, my, the locations of my buildings are because of trying to provide full loop roads for a wildland fire truck around all of my buildings. And also to provide an alternative egress from my property, should that be required in some kind of situation. And so the roads, the buildings were placed to provide that. We used to have a backhoe. My husband scratched out some roads. We, we did a lot of timber removal. This, I don't know, some people, you might remember this. This was front page article on the Journal. And this was a neighborhood effort to remove timber and fuel from the whole neighborhood. We probably pulled 1,500 sawable logs out of there, and several thousand others were taken down and either tripped, slashed, firewooded, whatever. We reduced the fuel load in our community probably by half. And so fire is very much on my mind and has been ever since we moved up there. And the location of this shed aids that effort. The property line is between me and my neighbor, Jason Wilmies. And you may have a comment from him. He wanted to come and support me today. But as a guy, he works for himself. I said, don't take time off. If you could just comment. He said he had no objection to this. His abode is way on the far edge of his property. So we're not even near each other as far as looking at buildings. I can barely see his, his house through the trees when I'm standing beside that shed.
So Catherine, the motion from staff is for approval. I think the question Mr. Drews was asking, if he knew when the shed was put in, and I'm gathering from what you were saying, it was put in in 2002 approximately, and it was delivered there, not built?
No. I, I am saying that that shed was not there when we did this work. This work is dated 2007. So I'm going to peg the arrival of that shed on the property at around maybe 2009.
Okay.
And it is a shipping container, but from the photograph, I think you can see that we have done our best to make it into an attractive shed. We put a sloped roof on it, roof on it with the metal roof for fire mitigation. All of my roofs now are metal. We got rid of the wood shakes. So this, the location of all of the buildings on my property and their structure, their construction is definitely always with fire in mind. And I, the, the wildland fire trucks currently can get around every building. They wouldn't have to ever back out. They can loop, and then they can egress out of a different place other than my driveway if that became necessary. The easement that is between my property and Mr. Wilmies serves no utilitarian purpose. It goes up into the Forest Service. And the gulch behind my shop, we actually have scratched the road of that gulch so that that could help the Forest Service in getting back to their property as well. So we've always been all about fire. I'm still all about fire. And the location of the shed is part of that.
Thank you, Catherine. Do you have any further questions, Mr. Drew?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
I'll go ahead and move to approve variance VA 23-03 with two conditions, as there are special conditions on the property that would excuse literal, literal enforcement of the zoning ordinance.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Roskin and seconded by Ms. Hagcock. Any further discussion from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. It's been approved, Catherine. You're approved.
Thank you.
And thank you for all the work that you're doing on your property. It's amazing.
Thank you. So I, I heard conditions. I, I'm going to have, I will be following up with the staff.
The two conditions is that this variance applies only to the portion of the north property line that is encroached upon by the existing shed. And number two is within 90 days of approval, the applicant obtain approved building permit and pays the associate penalty fees. You have to, that's why Mr. Drews was asking, was it there before you bought the property or not? Because, but you're going to have to pay penalty fees.
At the time we put that in place, we thought we were working with 10 feet. Of course, now we missed it by two feet.
That happens. Thank you.
We're amateurs. Okay, I, I did want to say that your folks in the office, Jason and Dwayne and all their support staff, have been so very helpful getting me here in front of you folks today. This is new territory to me, and you have a wonderful staff down in that office.
Well, thank you. I would have figured you were a pro of being here.
We think so, too.
You did good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we come to item B.
Good morning. Christine Phillips, Assistant Planner. Item B, variance VA 23-04 to reduce the setback to the south lot line from 25 feet to 7.7 feet for an existing garage. Staff recommends to continue this variance VA 23-04 until March 21st, 2023, to readvertise.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd make that motion.
It's been moved by Drews, seconded by Lauster, to continue variance VA 2004 to the 32123 Board of Commissioning. Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number C, missed.
Good morning, Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item C is variance VA 23-05 to reduce the setback to the north lot line for a proposed garage. the setback to the north lot line for a proposed garage. The applicant landowner is Kevin Bauer. And the agent is Josh Chamberlain, Ringel Construction. They are in the audience if there are any questions. Location of the property is 23727 Pine Haven Drive. It involves 3.29 acres. Current zoning is rural residential district with an existing land use of residential. Access is off Pine Haven Drive and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. When reviewing variances, we take a two-pronged approach. For prong number one, whether granting the variance runs counter to public interest, the answers are on the screen. I'll read them aloud. Number one, no, the requested setback is 10 feet from the north property line. The proposed detached garage will be constructed 10 feet, or 10 feet, three and three sixteenths inch feet from the property line per the applicant's survey. Number two, no, it appears that all existing structures in the neighborhood meet the required 25-foot setback. Number three, no, rural residential zoning districts require 25-foot setback from all property lines. Number four, yes. The future land use of the property is low density, which requires an eight-foot setback to the rear lot line for detached accessory structure. Therefore, a 10-foot setback would meet the setback requirement for the future land use designation. And number five, no, the proposed garage will be at the end of the applicant's driveway. The requested setback of 10 feet should have minimal impact on the safety, health, and general welfare of the public. The property lining questioned borders forest service. And for prong number two, whether a special condition exists to grant a variance. Number one, no, topography limits buildable area on portions of the property, uh, but not to the extent that this would be the only location to construct the proposed garage. Currently on the property, there is a single-family residence that was built in 2001 and a septic system that was replaced in 2015. This was run around for an attorney partner review. There were no objections or concerns ever received. The applicant has requested to allow a 10-foot setback to the north property line in order to construct a detached garage. The applicant stated the request is due to topographical and geological constraints on the property. Staff met with the applicant's contractor who stated that the garage could be constructed on the west side of the house. However, it would require large rocks to be removed and it put the structure right up to a drop-off. Uh, so if you look at the picture on the screen, this would be the location that we're talking about to the west and this is a drop-off uh, right here. On February 28th, 2023, staff conducted a site visit and observed the following. Buildable areas of the property are limited due to, due to topography. However, it appeared that the garage could be placed in the front of the house. Staff spoke with the applicant who said the garage location was selected to have minimal impact on the neighbors and as little disturbance as possible and to be in compliance with their homeowners association. Uh, that's why the garage is being constructed. It's to house a trailer. Apparently goes against their HOA rules to have a trailer out. Um, staff did not receive any public objection, objections to the request. We did receive one email verifying that it was the north property line, not the west property line. And since it was the north property line, not the west property line, the neighbor didn't have any objections to the request. Uh, so with that, staff does recommend denial of variance VA 23-05 as there is no special condition that would excuse literal enforcement of Pennington County zoning ordinance. However, if the Board of Adjustment disagrees and approves the request, staff recommends three conditions.
Thank you, Cody. Commissioners, have any question for Cody?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
So Cody, one of the reasons I'm gonna support this is because the north boundary of the property of Butts Forest Service and the likelihood of that ever being developed is zilch. I'm not saying it won't be, but uh, if there's a neighbor there, then I might have a little bit different position on this. But I just want to let you know that I want the other commissioners to know that the north part of this does abort a, a large piece of national forest land.
Any other questions for, from the commission? Now, I'll make, I'll make one observation too, as I was going through this, Cody, is the future land use is low, low density, which requires an eight-foot setback. And so I, I think in your notes, it says therefore a 10-foot setback would meet the requirements of the future land use.
Yes. And, and normally when we see that future land use would, would meet that requirement and it would get the applicants what they want without a, without a variance, that would be the direction that we would inform them to go. Uh, however, out in this area, going down to low-density residential, uh, the staff couldn't support that rezone request. Um, so we didn't even, it wasn't even brought up as an option because it.
Create too much work from, but that's what it is. Our, our recommendation is it's, the future land use would be low density.
Correct. And, and I will let the commission know that this was a really, really tough one. Uh, cause like I said, there is some topographical and geological constraints on there. Um, it's just if you look at the, what our ordinance says a variance is required for, what you can grant a variance for, staff's very limited on what we can, the leeway that we can give, uh, just to let the commission.
Okay, thank you, Cody.
Chairman.
Ms. Hagcock.
Sorry. Um, thank you, Cody, cause the geological and topographical constraints of the property, I see with the drop-off. Um, it also requires large rocks to be moved and we, and put the structure right up to the drop-off. So, um, I am too in favor of the proposed um, variance for those reasons. Plus, I like the garage location was selected as to have a minimal impact on the neighbors, a little disturbance as possible and to be in the compliance with the homeowners association. And you also said the neighbors were in favor of it. Uh, that makes a huge difference so that for, not only the neighbors, but for the people that have to, um, build the house or the garage in this case. So I think that's pretty nice that they're looking out not only for themselves, they're looking out for their neighbors.
Thank you. Uh, do we have a motion? Is there any, is there any public comment on this?
Mr. Chair.
Hold on, I think we have somebody that wanted to speak. I seen someone's. The applicant wants to have, has a, has a word. So you must be Kevin.
I'm Kevin Barr. Um, I'm a registered engineer in, in the state of South Dakota. I've got 46 years of experience in the architectural engineering industry. So I kinda know a little bit about construction and, and design. Um, as you heard, the reason for the garage is to house a RV trailer and the towing vehicle and to give us a little bit additional storage space. I mean, we have a large house, but we don't have hardly any storage space right now. And I can't even use the, some of the existing bays of my current garage because they're all filled with stuff that we haven't unpacked yet. Um, so uh, really the main reason for the garage is, is, is future usage, protective products from hail damage and things like that. Um, also, one of my driving factors or criteria was accessibility. Uh, I've been suffering from rheumatoid arthritis for the last 10 years. I've had one hip replaced in April. I'm gonna get a shoulder replaced. Dodger told me I need my other hip replaced. I got issues with my knees. So other, all these other locations in my mind would maybe work today, but in near future, I may not even be able to get to them. And I don't trans, uh, you know, I don't traverse stairs, stairs well. And I have to move, move uh, utility or, or stuff to get into a trailer, even if it's just a box of food, it would be very difficult. So the criteria that I, that I put forward to design the, the facility was close proximity to the existing home. Um, minimum hard surfaces, uh, new hard surfaces, which makes it green. We're gonna use our existing driveway infrastructure to get there. We don't need to have another larger apron in front of the garage because it's just perpendicular to the existing apron that we have. Minimize rock excavation. These aren't, these aren't rocks. These are, these are rocks that are not just on the surface. These are rocks that go way down, uh, permanent. And, and these would probably have to be blasted. It's not easy to remove them. Uh, minimize required earth fill. One of the options would require roughly about 12 foot of fill on the entire area of the garage, which is, would be very expensive. And also would require that road to be paved on that side, which would, right now everybody that backs into there gets stuck. Um, minimize tree removal. We're taking down one tree instead of some of the other options would probably be 20 or 30 trees. Um, minimize excavation difference between the old and new garage, again ADA. We want the elevation to be roughly the same as our current garage so that we can move things in and out easily. Uh, the garage is to have similar construction as the house. We paid particular attention to make it look exactly like it was built when the house was built, uh, with wood siding and the same type of finishes all around. Um, the garage is, is, as I said, is for the RV and, and tow vehicle and additional storage. Um, provide ADA and compliance due to my handicap condition. Uh, the garage uh, is not to be visible or undesirable to any of the neighborhood. Uh, and uh, as we said, we want to meet the homeowners association um, requirements for storage of trailers inside rather than having them on the, the site.
Well, thank you, Kevin. Yeah, I, I wasn't trying to ignore you. The commission, it looked like they were already, they were in favor of it. So usually I'll ask the applicant if they want to come up and contest it or something like that. So, but you gave great explanation and we appreciate that. So.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I'll ask the commission if they have any questions for you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
I move to approve variance VA 23-05 with three conditions. And my reasoning would be I agree with the findings of the applicant and, and his application.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. So motion by Roskin and seconded by Laster to approve uh, the request with the three conditions and under the listed uh, items that the applicant had to list it. So we'd have to put those in the minutes. Can you read those, please, Mr.?
Uh, the findings?
Yes.
Alternate location west of the existing home is too narrow to allow the garage. Placing the garage west of the existing home prevents access from the front to the back of the property. And three would be proposed garage location uses the existing driveway, minimal, remove minimal trees and uh, debuts, as I mentioned, open public land, which should be that national forest land to the north.
Okay, so that, that's his reasoning. He has to have a reason to, in the board of adjustments to go against it. So that's his reasoning with the motion. Any further questions from the commission? Any public? Seeing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Kevin.
Thank you.
Move to closed board of adjustment?
Second.
Moved and seconded to closed board of adjustment. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Um, we do, Ms. Brittany, this is the consent agenda, item D. And I believe we have the applicant on Zoom if needed.
Correct.
But this is the consent agenda.
Yes.
I recognize Ms.
Uh, the board of adjust, or excuse me, the board of commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following item. Item D is lot line adjustment plan, LAPL 23-02 for Maurice and Connie Rainer. To reconfigure lot lines to create lot AR and lot 5R2 of Blocky of Idahois Mountain Development. And Planning Commission recommended approval of lot line adjustment plan 23-02 with six conditions.
Any questions from Brittany, for Brittany? Any public comment? To pull? Nope. I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Ron Roskin, seconded by uh, Mr. Drews. Any further questions? Seeing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're to uncontested hearings. Item E, Brittany.
Item E is planning unit development overlay review PU 21-21 for American Buffalo Resort LLC to review a planning unit development overlay, overlay for a recreational resort. The planning commission did recommend approval of the extension of this planning unit development overlay PU 21-21 with 24 conditions. When staff did the review of this planning unit development overlay, they were meeting all of their conditions of approval and there were no comments um, or concerns with the review. So with that, staff is recommending approval along with planning commission with 24 conditions.
Any questions of Brittany? No? Any public comment? Look for a motion from the board.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Move to approve the extension of planning unit development overlay PU 21-21 with 24 conditions.
Seconded by Mr. Drews. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item F.
Coach Sack, Environmental Planner. Item F is rezone RZ 23-01. It is to rezone 11.69 acres from agriculture district to low denser residential district. The applicant and landowner is Jamie Gerlock. Uh, this was continued by the planning commission to the March 13th, uh, 2023 planning commission meeting as a comprehensive plan amendment is required prior to a rezone. And that comprehensive plan amendment would, would be heard on that meeting date. Uh, so staff is going to recommend to continue rezone RZ 23-01 to the March 21st Board of Commissioners meeting.
So the.
I'd make that motion.
Moved, moved by Drews, seconded by Laster to continue to this item to the 323 Board of Commission meeting. Any comment from the public? Any more from the commission? Seeing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We come to contested hearings and commissioners. Uh, just point out, we have the item G, which is the wall one, but then items H through and our ordinance amendments. So they'll probably, staff will probably go through these pretty fast. So with, at some point, I just wanted to make the public aware that we have a lot of ordinance ones that we're gonna go over. And the commission, if they have one that they'd like to spend a lot more time on, um, bring that up now. So, item H or G, sorry.
Uh, so item G is mining permit MP 23-01. The applicant is Western Construction. The landowner is Merritt Pat Patterson and Sons. Uh, location of the property is north of the wall and south of the intersection of 222nd Street and Trask Road. Access is off Trask Road. Uh, current zoning is agricultural district. It involves 320 acres. And there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Um, while this is on your contested hearing, there was really no comment from planning commission or from any of the neighbors. Uh, the main point I'd just like to say is, well, the highway department came back and uh, are asking for an approach permit, a long road agreement, and then a dust control solution uh, that's approved by the highway superintendent that was sent to the applicants. Uh, they responded with what their plan is. They just need that approved by uh, the highway department, but the applicants are aware of it and are addressing it. Um, and again, there were no comments or concerns from the planning commission at the meeting. So staff is recommending approval of mining permit MP 23-01 with conditions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd put a motion on the table to approve mining permit MP 23-01 with 11 conditions.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded with 11 conditions. And those other conditions.
So those, the, the comments from highway were made. They're still as a, a condition of approval, but the applicants are aware of them and are.
So we don't need to add anything?
Nope.
Okay, so we're good with the motion on the floor. Any, Ms. Hagcock?
Uh, my approval of this is we've worked with Western Construction before and we haven't had any problems with this company. Um, we did asphalt plant and different stuff with them and they complied. So um, that's the main thing for me is that uh, these companies are in compliance, whether it's gravel, asphalt, or any kind of mining. So um, that's my decision why I have approved this today, just because they have been cognizant of the surrounding area that they have disturbed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hagcock. Is there any public comment? Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none. I have a motion for approval. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're to start on our ordinances. Brittany's been working hard at this and her staff for how long?
Um, well, the onsite wastewater ordinances, um, this is the first major change since 2014 on this ordinance. Um, but these, the other ones are just cleanup, um, some language cleanup, but this one's pretty significant. We did discuss this during the planning session. Some of these proposed changes that are going to be in this.
Question.
Um, section. Um, but I will read it into the record as item H is ordinance amendment OA 23-02 to add section 331 onsite wastewater treatment septic systems to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. And it was to update several of the requirements in this ordinance. Um, I'll just go through the, the major points and if anyone has any questions. Um, some of the major changes is the operating, it was called a permit. Um, we changed the wording to license because it is something that renews on a regular basis. Um, we did change um, some things in the frequency. As it stands right now, they're required every six years, um, no matter what, unless you're um, zoned and tax egg and you're on an unplanted portion. Um, we've actually changed this frequency um, to, it's not going to be every six years just mandatorily. It's going to be um, at the time of a building permit application for finished square footage, or if you're adding a bedroom. So if you're adding a bedroom, finishing a basement, things like that, um, it would require an operating license unless you have one that's already been in effect. Meaning you've pumped and had it inspected within that six years prior to submitting your building permit. Um, at the change of any designation request. So that's a rezone, plating, uh, conditional use permit, things like that. So at that time, um, you would have to update your operating license. Um, and then on sale and transfer, um, and then for any commercial and industrials systems, they would be required every three years just because of the, the usage on there. Um, and then we did keep this in here, the, the different frequencies. And a lot of times those come into play, um, if a system is maybe undersized, um, they will require additional pumping. Um, but still in compliance with, say, um, illegal land conforming type status. So s- those are some significant changes as far as the, the, the time, um, or the requirements for the license. Um, so it isn't a set every six years now. It's more so it's the applicant actually has to engage in, you know, like a building permit, uh, CUP, things like that, or a change in use on their property. So.
Thank you, Brittany. Uh, with, you know, one of the comments I think you said in the working sessions was, you know, this was a pretty, a pretty uh, hot topic in our community, especially up in the hills and some other areas when it first came out. And you, one of the comments you made is, you know, now that everybody's one gone through it and they've updated or you've got the information and septic's have been fixed, that that's why we are going to, on the sale of the property or even changing some of the ordinances to that.
Yes, um, now we've gone on two cycles. So it was originally approved in two thousand and ten. So it's been about thirteen years now. We are seeing, in the beginning, we were seeing twenty-five to thirty percent of the systems needed repairs. And now we're down pretty significantly and maybe that five to ten percent. Um, so I think that the education has gotten out there, um, the number of systems, some of the older systems have gotten upgraded. And really, you know, when these, when a building permit application or a CUP, um, or sale or transfer is still going to, I think, do what we need it to do as far as checking on the systems. I know that there was a realtor on the Planning Commission and, you know, most of the buyer's agents or seller's agents always require these licenses to be updated anyway. Um, so we, um, maintain that, um, in the ordinance.
Thank you. Put that more elegant than I did. Those are your orders. Does anybody have any more questions for, for Brittany on this? Or any further comments? Any public comments?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Brittany, uh, just one question. So relative to the adoption, you said two thousand and ten?
Yes.
What was, what was the procedure before that then?
There was nothing in place.
Okay. Thank you.
For, um, checking on it. So this is just, doesn't have anything to do with sizing. It only has to do with function, so that it's operating.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'd look for a motion from the commission.
Well, I have a few more changes, just to briefly touch on, no. Okay, and then under this, um, with the holding tank, uh, they are permitted only when all other options of wastewater treatment have been exhausted. Currently, that's in our ordinance, but it's in section three oh seven, which is not a section that normally people look at. Um, so we actually added it under the section where people can find it. Um, let's see, some other ones, some other major changes. One of the other major changes is that, uh, a two compartment septic tank would be required for garbage disposal. Um, that would be anything new moving forward. So anything that's existing would be grandfathered in and be okay. Um, the city currently, um, has this requirement, so it's nothing, um, out of the ordinary. Um, it just helps, um, it's better protection for the drain field in the long run to have the two compartment tank for garbage disposals. Um, right now, a garbage disposal requires a twenty percent upcharge in the size of the tank if you have one. Um, so this will add some added insurance, um, and it's worked well, um, for the city. So, um, with that, uh, and then the baffles, um, I know the board does remember that there was, um, Mr. Tally had come in front of the board um, to clarify that language. So that language was clarified, um, in this section.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Brittany, yeah, something else come, uh, come to mind. One of the meetings John Tally came, one of the larger contractors in the Hill City area. And he was concerned about another addition, uh, baffles or the, when the influent goes into the tank.
So that, that is what we had changed in here. So it's just a T, a PVCT. Um, currently, some of the, um, tanks are made and they have the concrete baffles already in. But because of that, they just don't have a long lifespan. They get holes in them, they drop off. Um, TJ can probably speak to it. He's actually the one that does most of the inspections. He can tell you that they're, they don't last. The PVCTs are, um, pretty inexpensive to put in when you're installing them. And they're what we call cheap insurance. So a baffle is a pretty important component of the septic. Um, so this ensures, um, the functionality of the tank and the protection of the drain field. And this is something that's required in other areas that have done these systems for a long time. So. But we updated that language to be more clear because I think he had some concerns with the way that the wording was in the
Okay.
old ordinance. So we fixed it. So it's, the wording is more, um, in line with what's actually required. Um, and then we did increase the holding tanks for black water. It used to be a thousand gallons. We increased it to fifteen hundred gallons. Let's see. And then one of the other big changes is our installers are required to be certified in Pennington County. And that was, um, something that actually came from a subcommittee during the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eight to two thousand and ten. And one of the things that was required was continuing education. Um, and we did that for quite a few years. Um, it was like a one day in October, November that they came. We had speakers come and speak to it. Um, and it was, um, pretty successful. And then COVID happened and, you know, with the things that kind of dropped off. Um, but there was some concern because it was one time a year or one time every two years. So if you miss that window of opportunity to come to this training, it was somewhat cumbersome to get certified. Um, one of the other things we struggle with is that there are a few requirements in our ordinance that are above and beyond what the state requires. And a little bit more, um, appropriate for the hills area versus, you know, the plains or East River that have different concerns and completely different soil types. Um, so we decided to, um, go for an actual exam. Um, and it's based on the requirements in our ordinance. Um, and it's just like a contractor's type exam. They can take it at any time. They can petition to take it at any time. Um, and it's based on the requirements that are in our ordinance. Um, TJ, who is our environmental planner that, um, deals mostly with this section of the ordinance and with the installers, has, um, spoken to almost every installer that he has had contact with and asked them, you know, what their feeling was on it. And they were all very much in favor of going this route versus the one time every two or three years training where one, they missed a day work, the eight hours where they're not working if the weather's good. Um, two, it's very infrequent, so it was difficult. If they missed that window, then it was difficult. And they had to do online webinars and, and things like that. This is a much more user friendly for the installers. And it still accomplishes what we want it to as far as them understanding our work, understanding our ordinance. And so, and the other thing, it would be, um, valid for five years instead of every two years. So it's consistent with what the State Plumbing Commission requires because there's also a state license based on the administrative rules. So with that, those are just the major changes. Everything else is pretty much the same. It's just reformatted, um, so it reads a little better.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
So the holding tank is the last resort because normally you're going to put a tank in the ground. You're going to put your bleach field out there and sanitary T and all that. On Sharon Lake Road, I, I see a house that I know is sitting on a bunch of bedrock and it looks like there's a mound system.
I, which one is that? It might be an ET bed, actually. It depends. If there is no soils available, it would be an ET bed versus a mound.
I just wondered if, I'd like, just a little background on this mound. It looks like a mound system, but I thought you might be aware of it, but.
Yeah, there's a few of them actually on Sharon Lake Road that are, there's a few ET beds and a few mounds. Uh, mounds are only allowed if you actually do have some soil. If you are completely on bedrock, you have to do an ET bed, which is basically like an impermeable layer. And then they put the soils on top and it's more, um, evaporate, vapor transpiration. Um, but those are expensive and they're huge. So you need a thousand square feet of an ET bed for every bedroom. So they're pretty significant. You need to have them in a sunny area. So, and, and they need to be relatively flat. So.
But if they would have wanted to go the cheaper route for holding tank, they would have had to explore the idea of a more expensive mound system.
They would. Um, what we do in those instances, um, to help cut down on costs, especially if it's new construction, they can break out their black and gray. If they do that, um, it's a forty, like the black water is only forty percent. So they would actually have a sixty percent reduction on the size of their drain field. Um, so those are some of the other options. So we try to explore every viable option before we go to a holding tank. Uh, typically, holding tanks are in floodways, um, on very small lots where you can't meet setbacks to shallow wells, things like that. So.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Brittany? Any public comment? Back to the commission. Look for a motion.
Move to approve the ordinance amendment OA twenty-three oh two.
Moved by Laster.
Second.
Seconded by Roskin, next. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
And item I is public hearing of ordinance amendment OA twenty-three dash zero twenty-three for Pennington County to amend section two oh four J, the onsite wastewater treatment systems. Um, so basically what this is, is currently where section three thirty-one is because we added that as a whole separate section because it's easier to find in our ordinance. It's currently, it's under our general district provisions, which is this two oh four J. So the two oh four J now will just reference section three thirty-one. It's just going to say that you have to have a septic system if you don't have public or community systems. And if you do, it has to meet sections three thirty-one, which was the previous section that was just approved.
Move to approve ordinance amendment OA twenty-three dash oh three.
Second.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Haggard to approve. Any public comment? Any further comments from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item J.
Item J is public hearing of ordinance amendment OA twenty-three dash zero four for Pennington County to amend section five eleven fees of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Um, this is basically to add the fifty dollar installer certification application fee that is for their licensing. Um, previously, when they were attending the, the one day seminars, those would run anywhere, anywhere around seventy-five to a hundred dollars. Um, so this would be the fifty dollar, basically a contract, a license, contractor's license fee for the five years.
So Chairman.
Ms. Haggard.
So the operating permit, twenty dollars. Why do we still have that?
Because we do. There hasn't really been any, um, with, now we're not doing the mass mailings and some of the, um, things. You know, that was like an administrative fee for it.
I thought it was more for when we started and then we ended up doing initial application and installer certification now. Um, I think the operating permit should be with initial application. I think they understand it better because most complaints, and it's only twenty dollars, it seems like that'd be the least amount that they complain about. But that's what I hear about the most because they already have to do the initial application and all the other stuff they didn't get at this point. And I know some of it, Brittany, was to track on the operating permit. But at this point, I think we're past that. So I don't know if we, we exactly need the operating permit anymore. I think it could go with the construction permit.
So with the construction permit, with the initial application, so when they get a new system put in, they automatically get a, a license issued. So they basically get what we call like in the system, logged into the system. So they wouldn't have to get a license anymore. Not every six years. It's only, um, when they do a CUP or they do a building permit. So.
But you could track them through all of A, B, C, and number three at this point.
Or the building permit or conditional use permit. But that, I mean, if that's something that this board would like us to look at, that fee, um, we could come back because that wasn't advertised for this section.
Wow. So you'd probably look for a motion to continues to the twenty-first building?
Just, just to see if I'm missing something there, but that's the most complaints since I've been on this commission. It's twenty dollars, but it should be, I, I think with inspection fees and different stuff, it's covered.
So with this one, the only thing we advertised was number three. So if you approve this ordinance amendment, it's not changing anything. Um, we can definitely look at the operating permit and amending that fee and bringing that back as a separate ordinance amendment. If that's what the board wishes.
That'd be fine.
I'd be good with that.
Okay. That'd be my motion.
Second.
Clarify that for me. There's a lot of go, so you're going to, we're going to vote for approval of this, but you're going to bring back?
An, an ordinance amendment for the operating license or operating permit fee.
There we go, okay. Uh, it was moved by Lassiter and seconded by, or by Haggard, seconded by Laster. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item K.
So item K, L, M, and N all have to do with the dead end road systems. And it has to do with the definitions between the current zoning ordinance, um, the definitions in the zoning ordinance, the definitions in the sub rigs and where it talks about it in the subdivision regulations. So basically, it's just to make all of those, um, I don't know why this is happening. Um, all of those definitions in line with one another because currently they are not. Um, so they're conflicting. Um, so, um, I know that this board had seen two variances that came in front of them. One of them required the variance to the dead end road system and one did not. And it was because of interpretation of the, um, definition as far as that last sentence here that says connection to a roadway that functions as an arterial. Um, so we are just cleaning up these definitions so they're consistent across the board. So they're applied similarly.
So Brittany, would, would there be any conflict if we took one action on items K through N? Because they all just say to approve that ordinance or would we need to read them all in?
So item K is for two oh four F. Um, L is under section one oh three, the definitions. And then M and N actually are part of our subdivision regulations for the definitions. Um, so they're all similar definitions. They're just different sections.
Yeah, we'll take them up separately.
So.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Brittany, the two miles, how do we come up the two miles instead of one mile or three miles? I, I just wondered where the two miles.
Um, I know that this isn't, isn't always a good answer, but that was what was in the existing ordinance, um, that came up. Uh, when the original subdivision regulations, um, were developed, it was a committee in two thousand and eight. Um, and then again in two thousand and thirteen, and that's what was proposed, um, from the committee was the forty lots and the two miles. I do believe that comes from a recommendation, um, from the emergency personnel that deal with, um, these situations. So the number of units and the, and the length.
So some of our previous meetings, especially the ones down by Rockerville off of Neck Yoke. So you got Pine Grove and those corridors and so that, if this would have been placed then, would this have been, been easier for us to make decisions back then?
Well, they would have had to get a subdivision regulation variance to plant those number of lots at that time where prior to two thousand and eight, this wasn't in the ordinance, two thousand and eight and two thousand and twelve. Um, so anything planted prior to those dates didn't have this requirement. So there wasn't any dead end road requirement. So they were allowed to plant.
But one of the things we're omitting is the total number of roadways. And I think that's kind of important. I mean, not important, but I'm glad that it's being omitted. It makes it cleaner, in my opinion, if I understand it right.
Yes, it does. Actually, it's easier to interpret.
So Chairman.
You did, follow up, Ron?
I'm good.
Ms. Haggard.
So basically on forty unit rule, what has changed?
Nothing. This is just cleaning up the definition. So they're all consistent between our zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations because right now they're conflicting. So this is just the cleanup. It doesn't change the forty units. It doesn't change the two miles. It doesn't change the actual criteria that's involved. It just changes it. So they're all consistent and they read the same, essentially.
Right, and I appreciate that because it's the same, but the forty unit rule, I've never figured out the answer of why we do forty. And I haven't found that the answer of Thunderhead Falls would be different in some aspects than other areas, not just Thunderhead. But that was a perfect example where there's no way in, no way out. There's a canyon. And then other places that, you know, you could take an alternative route. So, um, we're cleaning up the language, but we're not really helping the bottom line. So. I'll, I'll approve the cleanup of the language, but we got a lot more work to do on the forty unit rule. Because I don't, I don't know if there should be a forty unit rule. It might be a twenty unit rule or a, might be a ruling because of, of, of the dead end road. Makes total sense to me, but not the, because of forty units. It might be thirty. But not the, because of forty units. It might be thirty, it might be twenty, depending on the area. It might be sixty or a hundred. So on a dead-end road system, depending on the health, safety, and welfare, that, that area of getting in and out. For me, the emergency services is the huge thing to do with the forty-unit rule. So, um, I know we were working on that, Brittany, but, um, I still think we need, we have a lot more work on. Is it a state rule, forty-unit rule, or just a county?
No, it's county, and I believe Rapid City has similar ones. Um, this last year in the legislature, they did change the statute that we can't require by ordinance, uh, fire sprinkler systems in single-family residences. So that changes some of our mitigation ability. Um, so we have been talking as staff, trying to figure out how, whether a fire mitigation plan is warranted, whether, uh, an evacuation plan is warranted in areas that have, um, flood plain. I know that we're working on a flood plain ordinance to update that also. So there's some things coming into play with it. But it sounds like that with staff and working with emergency services, some of those mitigation plans are probably going to be the way that they go. Then it's going to trigger those requirements.
Based on state law because there is a one, and we only followed city, which became problematic for the city as well as us. It seems like we would just drop that and call it a dead-end road system and base it on health, safety, and welfare. You already know it might, like I said, so. Um, I guess that brings me back that I'm not really in favor of a forty-unit rule. Even if you clean it up, I appreciate all the work you did, but I don't think we're there yet. And I probably won't approve these, not because you didn't do the right thing, Brittany, but because, um, I just don't think we're there yet for what we should do with the forty-unit rule.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on. You done, Deb?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Drews.
So I agree with Deb.
Mr. Drews in next in line. Sorry.
So this goes along a little bit with, uh, what Commissioner Hagcock is saying. I served on the planning commission and I made note at the planning commission level that, uh, even though we're probably approving all of these, that, uh, we wanted additional proposals in the future relative to the dead-end rule. So, uh, that that was a commission objective, I think, to, uh, try to clean that up and have a little better understanding of, of the forty units and the dead-end rule and so forth. So.
Okay, say something to that.
Mr. Ross, uh, Ross Connect.
Deb, Deb can follow up.
Just a follow-up of Gary's. Uh, maybe we continue this and look at a dead-end road system type thing instead of put in a forty-unit rule because it's not based on state law. It's not something we have to do at this point and look at a little bit closer. Um, that makes more sense than taking three ordinances that we might change later, just because of a dead-end road system, I think is, makes more sense. So.
And the only thing this does is like the current language it's in right now is conflicting. So without these changes, it continues to conflict. I don't think that there, I mean, even if we approve these today, um, we can come back with a new ordinance amendment, um, to look at, you know, the different options that we have as far as mitigation plans and things like that. Um, this just cleans up the conflict because even if we don't approve these today, moving forward until we get the new, the new.
Oh, you need something in there right now by law.
Yes, just so there, it isn't conflicting because, um, like I said, that one, um, ver- those two variances that were in front of you probably like a month or two ago, they were significantly different and it didn't seem like it. But because of the way one had to do with the subdivision regulations and one had to do with our zoning ordinance, and they didn't read together. So one had to get a variance and one did not.
Maybe I could work with you on this and, and, uh, if any other commissioners on maybe turning into a dead-end road system type thing instead of forty unit, but approve this today because by law, we need something in there. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. And then, um, probably moving forward, just direct staff, maybe we could work. I think it needs committee, and I think that there needs to be some emergency personnel involved to figure out why that, where that came from and why, um, they're sticking to it. I know we've, um, talked to Jerome and Chip about it. And with some of the changes now, um, with the state legislature, with them changing that, that we can't allow fire sprinklers because that was kind of our go-to. Now, now we're not allowed to do that by ordinance. So now it's kind of a redirect on how we address these, um, moving forward. Because I know that that was, um, a lot of what the city of Rapid City did in the past. Um, so what this board has done, and now, now we have to look at things different again. So.
Thank you, Brittany, for all your work.
So would I get, Mr. Ross Connect, do you?
The only thing I was gonna say, if you, if we're gonna use forty, it should be not exceed forty, but then also depending on individual circumstances of the conditions. So the be, uh, the road gonna be three miles long. Is it gonna be a twenty-four-foot road? Is it gonna be a twelve-foot gravel road? I think every one of those have to be taken into consideration. And then we make the decision if it's a, a safety hazard because every time these come in front of us, there's so many variables. Uh, I can't build a house twenty-five feet off the Neck Yoke or be, be, right on the corner and it, so I think every one of these, we have to look at individually. We want to use the forty, that's fine, but we need to have a clause that gives us a little flexibility to exceed that if we need to.
So are you done?
Could I speak just really briefly?
Sure.
Megan Krueger, State's Attorney's Office. So this is just a gap filler. All of these considerations that you guys are talking about right now of how you want the forty lot rule to look in the future, um, that can all be discussed. And I know that that's gonna be a larger and much longer conversation. Um, so this ordinance that's being proposed today, as Brittany kind of said, it's a gap filler because right now we're treating properties that are almost exactly the same differently based on what they're doing. And that's not really fair.
Okay. I understand that. So I think, what I think we need to do is vote on these. I think we understand we, it's a gap filler. But I'd add an item, well, under items from chair and commission members, uh, from what I, from what I am hearing, a request is gonna be for a, a committee to be formed to work on the forty-year rule. What would be your recommend, well, I can bring it up, but under item twenty-five.
Right. A group or just individuals that could make some recommendations. And I think it needs to come to be, um, criteria-based. Um, kind of like Commissioner Ross Connect was talking about, like if this, then this, if this, then this, you know, if it's, if the road is, you know, ordinance fourteen, does that, you know, different kinds of criteria. So then if they don't mean a number of criteria, then it would kick them into something else. I think it's almost gonna have to go to criteria-based because there are so many variables where you look at Thunderhead Falls Road where you have eight bridges. I mean, that, that's significantly different than, say, Bradsky Road. You know, so it's, uh, looking at all of those different, um, factors.
So from my understanding, is the commission wants some type of work group to work on the forty-year rule and with planning department and bring something back?
I would agree with that. Yes.
Okay. And you will work on that?
Yes, and.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
And I wouldn't mind being part of that in some capacity because most of this is gonna be in my district. So.
Okay.
That was my understanding.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I would move to approve ordinance amendment, uh, OA twenty-three dash five.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
On a, I'd, I'd move also, or, uh, L, I'd move to approve ordinance amendment, uh, OA twenty-three dash oh-six.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion from the public or commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item M.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
Also move to approve ordinance amendment OA twenty-three dash oh-seven.
Second.
Moved by Drew, seconded by Ross Connect. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number N.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
Move to approve ordinance amendment OA twenty-three dash oh-eight.
Been moved by Laster, seconded by Drews to approve item number N. Is there any public comment? Any from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany. Next, we come to legislative updates. Uh, Commissioners Drew and Mr. Laster. I'll go from left, right to left. Mr. Drews.
Okay. Um, so we're in the final few days, uh, legislative session. On Friday, I think they had pretty well thought that there was an answer to the tax reduction that is completely up in the air yet at this point. So I don't think we'll know what's happening, uh, in regard to that until probably, uh, at the end of Thursday when they're actually adopting a formal budget for the, for the state also. So, uh, Senate Bill twenty-one, uh, which is the forest land, um, management bill for nine hundred and fifty thousand total, uh, that's been approved. And as far as I know, that's been signed by the governor. My sheet doesn't show that, but I think that has been signed. Uh, the Senate Bill twenty-six, which was the transfer of property tax relief uh, to change income requirements for some of our property taxpayers, that was signed by the governor. Uh, Senate Bill forty-one, the one to establish, uh, housing infrastructure loans and grants. I don't know what impact that may have on the Pennington County Housing Authority. Uh, but that has been signed by the governor at this point in time. And so any applications that have been made to that, that during this course of this last year, I think could be automatically transferred over. I don't know if you had any, uh.
I talked to Brian about that, uh, relative to our proposed seventy-unit, uh, apartment complex. And he didn't, uh, apply for anything because it really wouldn't have done the city good.
Okay. Okay.
It was, it was nice to know that it was out there.
Yeah.
As an option.
Senate Bill seventy-four, which is, uh, one of Senator Duhamel's, uh, she was a prime sponsor. This is the one to establish regional jail authorities. That ended up getting killed last week. Uh, and I don't think there's probably gonna be any kind of, uh, revisitation to that. Uh, same way with, uh, uh, Senate Bill one fifty-five, which was, uh, Senator Breitling had introduced that. This again was gonna provide some dollars for loans and grants, uh, for jail improvements. That also was killed, and I don't think that's gonna come back around in any form, probably either at this point in time. Um, House Bill ten forty-two, the, the one that making the, uh, in- increase the, um, what we could charge for sending out place-in-place and decals, uh, that was approved. Uh, it sat on the Lieutenant Governor's desk for a number of days. Um, Holly learned this morning that he has signed that now and turned it over to the governor. So we've basically been told that that was, that was being held as a little leverage on others by the governor. So we probably won't know, uh, until towards, when the legislature is ready to go back at the end of the month as to whether or not that was used for any particular political purpose and whether or not it was signed by the governor. Um, I would think that a bill like that would probably have a a good chance of probably being overriding a veto if something like that did happen because I, I truly think this, this was strictly a political move to do that. So unless you got questions on specific bills, um, that's all I've got for my update. There's, uh, there's gonna be a lot of bills, a lot of movement in the next two or three days as far as, uh, this is negotiation time by both the administration and the legislature to get what they want.
Thank you, Mr. Drews. I do have Mr. Laster for a report, too. Do you have anything you wanted to report?
Or, uh, the legislative?
Yeah.
Would be, um, Senate Bill one thirty-nine, which is the bill that I worked on specifically from the letter that we sent forward. Uh, it's passed and it's just waiting the signatures. I believe it has to get the signature of the speaker first before it goes before the governor. But, um, it passed as well. It got amended, uh, an appropriate amendment based on some concerns, and then, uh, it has passed. So we, it looks like we most likely will have a thirty-day residency requirement in Miss Davis' house, too.
Okay. Sounds great. Thank you, Mr. Laster.
Are we doing all of our reports or was that just the legislative?
Just legislative.
Okay.
Do you have anything you wanted to report?
Uh, relative to the legislature?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I think Gary covered everything.
Okay.
Gary and I work in unison, so Gary's a lot better at that. But
Okay.
I was pretty involved in the beginning. I just, uh, followed Senate Bill twenty-one and it, it ended up in a good place.
Okay. Thank you. Deb, do you have anything you wanted to report on the legislative? Okay. That moves us on down to twenty-five, and I'll reread that again. Items from chair and commission members, is the time for individual members to bring forth ideas or concerns to the full board. Uh, official action will not be taken on any items brought forth at this time, but direction may be given to bring items back before the board for future consideration. I did, you know, thanks to Deb for bringing that up on, on, uh, the highway department. I think those were some good ide- I never thought about, uh, the limits of some of the approval costs. That's a good idea, but I didn't, I was thinking about a consent agenda, something along those lines for them because they seem to be having a lot of stuff that I I agree that we don't, I don't think we need to go.
That the citizens need to know if they want to know, but.
Yeah, I mean, we can pull it. It's, all the information's on the, on there.
And change some of the amounts, maybe because of what costs have went up. You know, might have to be a little bit of changes in cost and that makes sense to move on.
So I think me and Deb are on the same page as that, as, as Dav's staff, just kind of look into that and maybe re- report back to us if that's something possible. We could do some positive changes we could do. Um, that's all I had. I didn't know if any other commissioners had anything else they'd like to bring up or discuss.
Uh, relative to?
This is just, you know, if there's something that you'd like more information on or or, uh, request staff to do some research on or something, that's what this item's for, is item twenty-five.
I'm good.
Looks like we're good. So we got that. Next, we'll go to committee reports, and I'll just go down the line. Um, Travis Laster.
All right. So, uh, TIF was canceled this morning, so I didn't go to that one. However, I was at the Weed and Pest. Um, they have new leadership. Mark Nisanto is the current sitting chair now, and Paul Paulson is the vice chair. Uh, nothing major in that meeting except that they're getting ready for all their spring work coming up here. But they did have a video of their masticator in action. They have a drone that they, um, flew up above their, uh, their masticator, and they were showing how it basically just eats trees. It's kind of cool. If you've never seen that thing in action, man, I think they just tear, tear it up. And so uh, that was kind of one of the conversations there. And of course, there, there are no more Weed and Pest grant, uh, processes. Um, do you want me to talk about any other meetings that I had that are not on this particular listing?
Yes, please.
So, uh, we already talked about the wall ambulance meeting because they came here to present. That was kind of part of that. Uh, I went to the wallfish meeting, uh, to discuss how that's gonna move forward. And the, the only other meeting of note that I was at um, this last two weeks, within the last two weeks, was the New Underwood Fire Board, um, Fire District, um, Fire Board election. Um, I was elected by the local community as one of the judge and then placed as moderator in that. That was a pretty good, um, process. A lot of people in attendance. Commissioner Hagcock was there, uh, in attendance just to make sure, and, you know, we just made sure that that, uh, election was ran appropriately and properly and to kind of smooth over some of the tensions in the community. And so uh, we, the new board was, um, elected and seated that night, and, um, we hope things will, will kind of tone down a little bit and that they'll move forward in the right direction for that fire district.
Lots of compliments on how Travis ran the election and very efficient and effective. So thank you for doing that, Travis. That worked out really good.
Thank you.
Great. Um, I'm next on the list. Justice Management Institute pre-trial training, we attended that last week. That was Mr. Drew and Ms. Hagcock were there, so I'll let them uh, explain a little bit what they took out of it. What I received from it is I think, uh, a lot of our diversion programs, a lot of things that we're doing with the PDO and with the State's Attorney's Office. I think we, we already do quite a bit of what this guy had talked about, but Deb had some very good questions from the guy on, on some of the stuff that were very pertinent. But, uh, you know, I what I gathered, what I think our, our program, what we are doing are, is good work. But, uh, I got a little lost with this guy because I think it was, he didn't, when you're talking about trying to do a case management interview from time of intake, within twenty-four hours, six hours, I struggled with that as far as you having that kind of, uh, manpower to do that. I think we have our risk assessment that we do, and I think that's working great for us. But to do a full, and he even admitted that it wasn't a full, uh, interview or assessment for, for, uh, for, for release before the judge sees him, but I, I just struggled. I'll let you guys talk a little bit more about what you got out of that, but I think our risk assessment's pretty good and I think the after fact of what our, our PDO and State's Attorney's Office is doing happens, but just not in the time period as with the, that guys. That's how I'd best explain that we are doing some of that. The other one I had was Community Health Center and Community Health Center was just general business. We were going over monthly incomes. We approved a couple of new physicians and a dentist, but that was just pretty much normal work, nothing to highlight from there. The Black Hills Association of County Commissioners, we elected new officers. Of course, I didn't even bring it, so I can't tell you who the officers are. I don't, Holly got back to being secretary again, the way of Charles.
Charles Verholtz.
Verholtz as, as the president and vice, our vice president is.
Wendell Yellable.
Yeah, Wendell Yellable. And he asked about Deb. He says, where's that girl? Says she don't come here. So yeah, just, just a little heads up, Wendell asked about you.
Wendell's nice.
Yeah, he is.
I met him years ago at County Commissioner, so.
So he's vice, he's vice president now and he's very soft, yes, he's very soft spoken, but.
Part of.
They came down, you got to give them credit, they came down here from Ogala up to Timberlake, which is a long haul.
Hundred and fifty miles plus.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I give them credit. That was a good, good, that was a very good meeting, Mr. Delbert and I don't remember who the, I'll let Gary do the legislative stuff on that because you got a better memory than I do. But that was a good meeting. It was a good turnout for that far out. I was really surprised. So the NACO and Public Lands, I mean, that's on my calendar every month, but I don't, I do not get the Zoom link for that every month. So I don't think there was, unless, Ron, have you seen one?
I didn't get this.
Yeah, so I think that just, just for our information for gentlemen, I think it's on our calendar as a set date and time, but it's, it's not happening every month. We're not getting the links. If Randy sends them to us, we have them, I think. That's when we get them.
If the Senate Bill 21 passes and we get the nine hundred and fifty from the state, we're going to have a full-time employee in here that can address a lot of this. And then, and then we got the consultants that the counties can hire and we've already obligated fifty thousand and we'll get fifty thousand matched from the state. So we can actually, if we don't have the time to do this, hopefully these consultants could just, that's what they're being hired for, to focus on this stuff.
Well, this WR Lands, NACO and Public Lands is, is a standing committee from NACO that they have and it's just updates on what they're working on, but yeah, I agree. But I think we'll get more information with, with, when we talk to Randy, I meant to men, talk to him at the Black Hills Area County Commission on this, but those are what I have to report. Next.
Want to mention the ribbon cutting?
Oh, yes, yes, sorry. Also attended the Oyate Healthcare Center grand opening. There was a lot of people there, it was a great event. It's a beautiful, beautiful facility. I think anybody that showed up there, what they have, you're entering from the back right now. And so the front is going to be on the other side, the eastern side, once everything gets cleared out and so, so forth. But yeah, that was just a beautiful event. There was, people have toured it, they had a lot of information of what they do, you know, in that one main arena, the circle. There was a lot of information. I brought home some calendars, I'll probably drop off at the office, not calendars, but I meant posters, some of the stuff that they're doing. But it's, it's just an amazing facility, you know, I've, I've already used it with my dental, as you guys know, my last, I mean, I had to leave for dental up there. They included, I think they've got twenty chairs now, but the problem that they are having is same way as community health is getting the bodies in there to work, you know, they're trying to get them out of school and so forth. One of the hygienists that I talked to, she had mentioned that, you know, if one person calls them sick, they have to cancel a whole day worth of schedules because that's how shorthanded it is.
You know Jason from Planning's girlfriend works at Oyate?
No, I didn't know that.
Works in radiology, so I was asking her questions of, does she think Sandy's awesome?
Well, I, I have to admit, you know, their care has increased a hundred percent when it comes to patient care. I mean, they're getting you, trying to get you with the same doctor, getting you the same physician and doing follow-ups and getting in for meetings. And this is quite the changeover from what I've experienced growing up. So yeah, it, it, to me, it's just a great change and I, and it was a proud moment to actually be there to help celebrate with what was happening in our community. And I, that's about what I can share on that.
Maybe you want to also talk about the sheriff's presentation, recognition, recognition presentation that was, we did in Wall?
I will leave that to you. I can do that. I'll go to Gary Drews.
Okay, well, I'm getting better, Holly. Two weeks ago, I forgot my laptop at home. This time I've remembered the laptop, but I forgot my notebooks, so I don't have any of my notes. So Healthcare Trust, I attended that last week, some interesting discussions going on with the Healthcare Trust. And financially, it seems to be doing fairly well, but I know that prior to my going on that, they've been talking about, you know, that there probably needs to be an annual adjustment for premiums on that. And so those, those discussions continue on. I also attended that Justice Management Institute pretrial. It was really a learning experience for me because I'd never attended something like that before. The gentleman, I think, was, was very sharp. I had an opportunity to talk to him for a few minutes, you know, after the meeting and, and so I talked to him a little bit about diversion programs and how many in the country were really happening. And I thought maybe we were one of the, kind of a select few of doing various diversion programs, but they're, they're catching on all over in the country. And he said that they've really proven to be very good. And he talks some about that, too, on the diversion programs and what it means as far as recidivism and so forth. And you know, they've, they've gone over extremely well, I think, overall. Planning Commission, those things we dealt with at the commission level today. The Hill City Public Meeting the other night was good. Commissioners Roskinek, LaCroix and myself were all there. We had, we actually had quite a crew there when you include the sheriff and emergency management was in attendance and two, two deputies besides that, their normal deputy that would be at that meeting and certificate, you know, really thanking them for what they did essentially back on December twenty-one when we had that storm roll through that nobody really anticipated it'd be as bad as it was and, and numerous people got caught at various places in that. And so Commissioner Roskinek and I ended up getting caught in Wall on that, so. But the community has really stepped up. We've now honored through the Sheriff's Department, honored New Underwood, Wicksville and Wall relative to their stepping up and assisting the traveling public on that. And so it's very much appreciated what they did do. The Legislative Cracker Barrel, it had the last one on Saturday, so that was the third and last one for the year. These went over, in my opinion, much better this year than they have in the past. And I think a lot of that had to do with the legislators figuring out before they attended those, what the public really wanted to, to hear about. And so they had done their homework, I think, pretty well as far as coming up with the, with the different bills and different legislation that, that they felt the public would want to hear about it. And I think that answered, you know, because they give each of the legislators like five minutes at the beginning to talk about what was going on and then the public can submit written questions. And I think that they really touched base on most of those things and that the, that the public was interested in. So I, I thought they went over very well for, for here this time, so that's something I got.
Mr. Roskendt.
Well, like Travis said, the TIF committee was canceled due to the two-hour delay for the city, but I did study both TIFs. And sometimes if you really study them, and when I first got on that, I didn't really look at them that close because I didn't really know what I was doing, but when you really look at a TIF, it's got to follow all, all the criteria that the state sets up. And the first big hurdle would be the, twenty-five percent of the area's got to be blighted. And that is a very subjective, you know, what is blighted because when you really read these reports and then you look at the staff's comments, staff doesn't really recommend, agree that they're blighted. So it, it was interesting, I did study them both and hopefully when they reschedule, I'll be in, I can be able to make that next TIF meeting because I don't want to just rubber stamp these, but I want to make sure that we're following the proper process because I don't think the city says, we recommend it. They say, if you recommend it, we will turn it into a resolution and carry it forward to the city council. Building Committee, there's a couple of things there. As Kevin mentioned, we met with TSP and we met with ARC and they, they're both really good. And as he mentioned, TSP, I like everything being under one roof and having a very qualified experience estimator, because when we start looking at the cost, you know, if we get in that building for ninety-two dollars, land, building, FF and E, I don't want to spend another ninety-two dollars. I want to sit there and convert that into a county administration building, but really be prudent with the taxpayers' dollars in doing so. And then another thing, the Hill City yard, well, highway, when the Rottler, South Rottler Road gets paid, they're going to have to buy another piece of equipment. And with that being said, their yard in Hill City is just not big enough and then it's got a very outdated fuel system. So one of the things that, you know, Joe mentioned, looking at some other options in the Hill City area, I'm not going to mention any names, but one parcel would be Zone Heavy Industrial and, but I don't know that that parcel's going to be available for sale. It could even be so. So then when we, we met with the Mystic District Ranger, Jim Goobles, and I said, Jim, you know, remember what we did with the Silver City Fire Department? You know, they went out and tried to buy land and they just, nobody wanted to sell them land because they didn't want a fire department next to their property. Well, I doubt you're going to find anybody that wants the highway department next to their property. So I said, would you entertain a thirty-year special use permit? And the parcel that I'm talking about would be fifteen hundred feet from the parcel that, the private parcel that we're trying to get, forest service land, excellent highway frontage, right between Hill City and Rapid City. And I, I planted out a, using the Rapid City GIS map, I planted out seven acres that would work real good. And Jim says, you know, if you can't, if you absolutely get those and you can't find a piece of land, we will entertain doing a thirty-year special use permit for the highway department. So at least we got our foot in the door and I think that's, you don't sit there and you buy any land and you don't sit there and I don't think there's any government entity that you pay any annual fee for the permit. And then we, we had our meeting in Hill City last week. We did a press release that we're going to have a public meeting to talk about the rising real estate market. This is before folks actually got their mailings. I know one person in attendance, he works at the Sheriff's Department, he actually went online and found out, so he was, he knew what his went up when he was at the meeting. But I think it really went pretty good. There's some folks that were definitely upset, you're always going to, but at least we made a heck of a good attempt to enlighten people how that works and not to go off the deep end thinking their taxes are going to go up the same rate that their assessed values did. And, and so then we, I was at another meeting before that, Johnson Sight and Community Center, and I explained to Mike that we're going to do one in Hill City. So he said, we would love to do one here. So that one will be the twenty-second of March at the Johnson Sight and Community Center at six o'clock. And I invited every representative and senator from District Thirty, Thirty-One, Thirty-Two, Thirty-Three, Thirty-Four and Thirty-Five, eighteen, all. I've, I've got a couple that have committed to come to that. I think that's going to help a lot to have somebody there on a state level. But I think it's really a show of good faith that we're, we're, we're willing to go out there in the general public and we're not going to lower their taxes, but we're going to certainly explain to them how the process works.
I have a question for me, Ron. Is, you know, Shannon puts on a really good presentation and from what I heard, it was pretty good.
Yeah.
Is it possible to get something like that presentation put on the website, our website so people could?
It's already on the website.
I, I haven't checked, so.
Yep, so.
So we can refer them to equalization.
Equalization, and when you go to the DOE website, it'll say rising market presentation.
Okay, I'll review that.
We've got just about everything that we possibly can, except doing a big meeting in Rapid City, which I don't know if that's necessary, but I really liked the idea that we've reached out, because I got a lot of really positive comments on one in Hill City. Even the lady that works at the Hill City paper said, you know, and even Brett, the city manager, he said, boy, you guys, you know, nailed it. Shannon does an excellent job.
Yeah.
And he works good under pressure. So I think I have covered everything that I need to talk about.
Don't you need to talk about the whole prayer wall presentation?
Oh, Gary did an excellent job on that.
Miss Hancock. So the Justice Management Institute pretrial training, I liked some of his stuff that he was taking, talking about for changes that were spending money on some stuff, maybe that we could do some different changes, but I think Pennington County overall does an amazing job. I talked to Brian about some of the stuff and he is looking into it already, so the things that I had concerns with, with the bracelets and the different stuff that the guy had talked about, basically the monitors. So I thought he did good. We are unique and he understood that we are unique in some of our aspects of what we do in, in our area. So I appreciated that he understood that, but I enjoyed just listening to him and anything that we take out, the pieces and parts that don't work first and the, and the parts that do, it's always good for me to, to be there and listen. Compensation Committee, of course, PTOT is one of those things we're looking at and wage studies still, so those are two things that are coming forward for us to get an understanding. Some of the departments for wage studies might be quicker than others just because of what's happening. Let's see, Compensation Committee also, Carol does a wonderful job. Cindy does a wonderful job with the numbers and segment Sandy, she helps Carol with a lot of her stuff. So I like the Compensation Committee and they have made changes, but again, my main thing was, and they have talked about it, Joe and Carol and, and the group about making the department heads a booklet of all the different changes and making a pamphlet or not booklet, what do you call it? Kind of like this, what, what, a reference.
Reference manual.
Yeah, man, a reference manual for the department heads because we think they know the changes. We think they know that what we're doing in each department and what those changes have been made. I don't think, not even the departments, but me in general, don't understand all that stuff all the time, but it's nice to have a manual just in case the employee asks the question, that they have a reference point, so. And that we have meetings for the department heads and maybe the employees if that's, Carol was listing at that for the changes, so people have an understanding and they're not saying things that really aren't happening to other employees. And that gets going and you have, you already know, people. And um, that gets going and you have, you already know, people saying things that isn't really happening and it makes a difference that those employees are in the know. Um, and they're to keep taken care of that way. So they they know that um, we're not doing negative, we're trying to do a positive for them. Um, Care Campus Advisory Board is always good. They have a new mental health coordinator. Um, she's just filling in for now uh for um, the pivot point. And there is no more crisis care at the pivot point anymore. It's just pivot point. We heard from, um, what else did we hear? Lloyd, you were there.
Well, I I think you you hit on that, but I think their first week, they had some very difficult cases and they're still working out how to do it. At least they got hit with the hard cases first, they can learn from it as far as the the section now, so.
Yeah, he's talking about pivot point. So um, Barry filled us in with some um, good stories. Um, just, people were just very positive. Um, we liked, um, Jim was talking um about different positive things that were happening in what he was doing with the homeless and the different areas. Um, just, I I call it a lot of kumbaya, where sometimes you get a lot of negative, but there was just a lot of positive things happening um in that meeting from all different areas. They're they're also talking about having these, they have these meetings that they're gonna invite some other people too, um, that might be key players um in the community to help problem solve some of the other stuff that was going on besides uh what our committee does with um, city, county, and just the care campus in general and sheriff's office. So I thought that was a pretty, pretty awesome meeting. Um, what I was gonna bring up is um, for this board, um, we're buying buildings, we're adding employees, we're changing wages. Um, twenty twenty-three has been a major change to a lot of stuff. Um, I have talked to Holly about this. Um, I think we need to know some numbers because what we're doing and and everything we're changing, um, even with sick leave or some of the different policies, I think we need to know some of those numbers, um, at least by June or before that budget to see where we're at. Um, again, we have, where like, where's the money coming from, from, and we know that, for, like, we did the um bonding, that's what does that pay for? And what do we have paid for on some of the buildings and how are we gonna pay for these buildings? Or where's that coming? Because we stopped a jail and then we want to add um, other buildings to that. We have wage studies where we have changed a bunch of wages in order to make it, and it wasn't, none of this is negative, guys, I'm not saying it negative, I'm just saying it's food for thought, that wages, we've changed a bunch of wages, wages compared to last year, where we at in each department there. I mean, some of this stuff is nice to know before we head into the next budget. Um, and what those changes are we thinking for the future, for twenty twenty-four that are gonna be huge changes that different areas might be looking at instead of hitting it, hitting us with it the year that the budget has already been made. If they need these things and if they need them so bad, they should have been, in some cases, maybe pre-determined that these things are working or these things might work. So it really makes a difference instead of asking during something like, the thing today was um, not objectionable to me in a sense, but where's the budget? How many employees do you already have? What's going on in the in the overall budget? That was more where I was trying to go. Um, not anything negative against either of those parties and what they were doing because it was amazing what they were thinking and how more efficient and effective they were, but just um, adding these grants and things, how many more employees are they expecting that grant to be employed? At least Mr. Parker was straight up today with that and I appreciated that. But how does that affect everybody's budget? And how much can you keep doing uh such grants and different things that are gonna be added to this budget? Could it, could they and should they know that if they are going to do a grant, are they wanting that at that point to be in the next budget instead of hitting with us the next year saying, you know, that really worked out good? Um, that grant ends in March and we'd like to um, have that person stay on board, you know, and this would be like for twenty twenty-four, but they should have told us in twenty twenty-three that probably was was gonna happen. Some of those three things I think people know that we need to um, be cognizant of and they need to uh be straight up uh with some of that because it makes a difference, I think, on our budgets. And it seems like sometimes we just piecemeal things and now I'm just, it seems like I'm confused with, okay, where's the numbers at with all these things that we're doing because we keep adding or we keep um, trying to do the right thing, nothing negative on us. We're trying to do the right thing by people, but we also um, those budgets um need to be um, put out there so we know how we're affected by them, by each change or if they're major changes. So for me, that makes a huge difference. So I don't have to question um, people so much where I feel, you know, that I'm trying to make them feel bad, that's not my purpose. It's more, um, I'm looking out for our budget, so.
Mr. Chair.
No, she's in the middle of her report.
Anyway, so I think I got all of that. Did I get them all?
You hit all your stuff, boss, so.
Yeah, just just root for that. I think it's it's something good for us to look at.
I I, I'm gonna let me, I agree with the Deb, I think, uh, before we go back to Ron, and I got another part of my report I forgot.
One of the, at the Hill City meeting, we we talked about bill liberties and assessments and taxes and all that stuff. But one of the things I wanted to take to that meeting, which we did, and that's why Cindy came in, was that we wanted, I wanted to show the general public a pie chart that showed our revenue sources, but then another pie chart that shows what we, how we spent that money in two thousand twenty-two. So general government legal services was thirteen million, seven thirty-four, eight, seventy-three, or fourteen percent of our total spending. And then general government other, it was twenty million, two oh four oh eight, oh eight oh, or twenty percent. Now I'm getting a lot of rebuttal, like, we want a more detailed breakdown. We don't want to see that twenty percent. We want exactly what Deb's saying. We want to see wages. I mean, they want that broken down so they can, because we told them, if you don't like the way we do the budget, you come and tell us what we should do different. And I think some of them are gonna come this year and they're gonna probably want to see more detailed uh information relative to wages, employees, because those are such a big component of our overall budget. So just uh, wanted to share that.
Good idea. Uh, absolutely, Deb, and Ron on on the budget part. I can say firsthand from Dr. My wife, what she doing, what she what she does and oversees, revenues are already down this year. And the reason because of that, and she was asked by her boss, why? And to investigate, and wages had to go up, you know, and so when the wages go up, the revenue goes down. Well, plus, you know, people are being a little more conservative also in what she does. So you're you're right, there's gonna be give and take, we have to take a look at that from both sides. So I agree, we'll we'll work on that. The other thing I forgot to mention was about a month ago, uh, I received a phone call from Stephen Baldwin and Associates and they're doing, uh, they're, I think they're contracting through the Rapid City Regional Airport because they're looking at uh, changing the government, governing of the airport. Um, I can't take questions on it right now because I don't have all the details. It was a, he asked for a survey or quite, asked me a lot of questions and then invited me to a workshop that they are having and he requested that com- commission leadership be there and and a management person be there. So it'd be me and Ron and Holly is what I suggested for this workshop. Once we go through this workshop, I, we'll be able to come back and report. But what it is, is they're talking about, what I, just a little bit I gathered from our conversation, he's talking about a regional board instead of a appointed board from the city. So, and his reasoning for it, and I asked why, was is so they could make decisions faster, faster turnover instead of uh, having to, the board making a decision and having to go to the city to get approval. That's the rough estimate of what I got. I won't know more until um, we have that board, but that's kind of a rough idea of what's happening. So I wanted to inform the group that this is going on or we'll report back once we're, I don't remember when the date is, March?
March twenty-second.
Second or something, yeah.
Twenty-second, I got the twentieth.
Or twentieth, I'm sorry, Monday, the twenty.
Something along those lines.
The twentieth at two PM at the conference room at the airport.
Well, me and Kevin Carley were in line with, I think his name was Kevin, who was the project manager, the person in charge of the airport. Really nice guy, never met him before, seemed really nice. So if he's part of that, it just, he seemed like, that's the first time I've seen anybody from there for a while, but I thought, um, he seemed like a positive. Thanks, he's been working there, it sounds like a long time, but anyway.
It, just a little, from the interview that I had with this guy, it seemed like a a pretty positive thing and it's nothing, second stone, it's gotta be voted on the, by the city council and the airport board. So I can't really give the total details without having paperwork in front of me, but I I know I got two people that are gonna be be able to give you good reports when we come back, you know what I'm saying? So that's the only follow-up I had on mine. Does anybody else have any follow-up? I'm gonna have a look at them. Yeah, I'm done.
You guys ever go to jury duty?
I'm scheduled for May. Oh, yeah, by the way, y'all should know that, I'm scheduled for jury duty in May.
I never knew that, but um, how are you supposed to tell them ahead of time you have a commission meeting? Because you didn't, if you've never been on it, then you go there and they're like, this could last three days. And you're like, what?
You can call them.
That when you go there, it could last, well, I know it could last more than three days, but still, how you tell them ahead of time? Because you have no idea that when you go in there, if they tell you, this is gonna last three days, we're all sitting there going, three days?
Well, don't ignore it and come to the meeting because you may be hauled out by the sheriff.
What'd you just say? What did you just say? I didn't hear what you said.
Yeah, I didn't hear what you said either.
I said, but don't ignore your duties to go to jury duty because, and come to the commission meeting, because if you do, a sheriff could come in and take you off the darkness.
Yeah.
They come and get you?
Yeah.
Oh.
She's like, I wanna go then, please go.
There's a button around here somewheres.
They have Hagcocks here, push the button. Come get her.
All right, item twenty-seven is approval of the vouchers.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Hagcock to approve two hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty and ninety-eight dollars. And seconded by Lastor. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Blaster.
Moved to go into executive session pursuant to SDCL one twenty-five, two, one, for personnel matters and SDL C, SDCL one twenty-five, two, three, for contractual pending litigation matters.
Moved by Blaster, seconded by Ms. Hagcock. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Need a motion to come out of executive session?
Move to come out of executive session.
Second.
Moved by Ron, seconded by Hagcock, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Uh, first item of action is a litigation three opening settlement, and I recognize Ms. Holly Hennies stepping in for Jay Alderman.
Commissioners, the motion you are requested to consider is move to authorize legal counsel for Pennington County to execute any and all documents necessary to participate in the national opioid settlements, including agreements with the state of South Dakota in order to receive distribution of opioid settlement fund proceeds.
Look for a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Roskinak to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next one is uh, SA, Sheriff's Office, sick leave donation from Mr. Smith, and I'll recognize Mr. Roskinak.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move, I move to approve the request to make an exception for Jack Smith to not require the FMLA application and qualification criteria to enable his eligibility eligibility for participating in sick leave transfer program.
Second.
Moved by Roskinak, seconded by Hagcock. Again, that was State's Attorney's Office, I think I was going with the Sheriff's Department, didn't I?
That's why I was like.
Somebody's supposed to correct me when I do that.
We're telling.
Okay. So any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have two items from the Sheriff's Office and I'll recognize Ms. Deb Hagcock.
First motion is to allow the auditor to pay Donald Ballard back pay in amount of one thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and thirty-one cents for hours worked September tw- fourth, twenty twenty-two, and February fourth, twenty twenty-three, the amount in which is the difference in what he should have been paid, had he been promoted to deputy sheriff two on September fourth, twenty twenty-two, like he should have been, but was not due to, but was not due to clerical issue.
Motion made by Hagcock, seconded by Roskinak. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
The next um, motion from the Sheriff's Office to move to reimburse Christian Rabey two hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty cents for the amount that he paid for vision premium twenty-two due to the fact that he's requested his vision be canceled in twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Roskinak. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favors, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Hagcock. I'll recognize Ms. Carol Bancroft, HR Director.
Thank you. As you said, Carol Bancroft, Pennington County HR Director. So a comprehensive wage study was conducted for our elected officials and the recommendation is actually twofold. The first is that in doing this study, that it was apparent that we needed to seriously consider as far as raising the base salary for our elected officials. And so the the recommendation is the county auditor would become ninety-one thousand annual base salary, the county register of deeds, ninety-one thousand, the county sheriff and coroner, that the base salary would be a hundred and thirty-five, the county state's attorney would be a hundred and thirty-five, and the county treasurer would be ninety-one thousand. So the recommended motions could read as follows. Then I move to update the twenty twenty-three annual base salary for the Pennington County elected officials to include county auditor to ninety-one thousand, county register of deeds to ninety-one thousand, county sheriff, coroner to a hundred and thirty-five thousand, the county state's attorney to a hundred and thirty-five thousand, and county treasurer to ninety-one thousand. As well as I move to allow the board chairperson to apply their signature to the Pennington County elected officials updated wage policy resolution for twenty twenty-three.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
That would be my motion.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Drews, it's seconded by Ms. Hagcock. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously.
So the second part of the wage study that, uh, for the elected officials, it included a market and data analysis, and that has been completed. So the market analysis was comprised of surveys, research, and interviews, and the data analysis included data for comparable positions in South Dakota with validation from regional and national data collection. The data included incumbent salaries, years of prior experience, years in elected official office, the scope of the position, the county population, and county budget. So from the results of this study, I'm requesting the board review the sheriff, coroner, and the auditor salaries to include consideration of the scope of their positions and the years of relevant prior experience before they were elected into the positions. So the current and new salaries would be that the the sheriff and coroner is currently at a hundred and twenty-five thousand, the new salary would be a hundred and fifty thousand, the auditor is currently at ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and one and twelve cents, and the new salary would be a hundred and twenty-five. So I am seeking approval to increase the sheriff, coroner to a hundred and fifty thousand and the auditor to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So the motion could read as follows. Move to improve, move to approve the increase in the sheriff, coroner's annual salary to a hundred and fifty thousand and to increase the auditor's annual salary to a hundred and twenty-five thousand effective April second, twenty twenty-three.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews. I'll make that as a motion.
Moved, moved by Drews, seconded by Hagcock.
And we need to include the names so that.
Oh.
Will be applied to that individual.
So the motion should, should have read, uh.
Brian Mueller, hundred and twenty-five.
And auditor Cindy Moller.
Chairman.
You want to rewrite it or?
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
You want to reread that?
Yes.
For, just for the, and add the names, just because we are on YouTube.
Yes. So, move to approve the increase in the sheriff, coroner, Brian Mueller, annual salary to 150,000, and to increase the auditor, Cindy Moller's annual salary to 125,000 effective April 2nd, 2023.
Okay, my motion.
That was Mr. Drew's motion, and the secondator is okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have a comment?
Yes, just, just a couple of things on that. Based on the market analysis, I don't think, since I've been here, we've raised people that amount, but we also haven't raised anybody in these years, a little bit, but based on what we've done for job description and prior experience for a lot of the employees these last few years, I think it was time to do that for people that actually are department heads, not only for, in this case, the elected official part of this, but in the future, looking at all of them, which we are going to do. So just so people know, this isn't just, this is the first step in which we are moving forward and looking at this for these reasons, because department heads, elected or not, are very important to Pennington County, and it has changed and the scope has changed a whole lot. And based in Pennington County, between Sioux Falls or anything, any other place, look at the difference of what these two, in this first case, do compared to these other counties and the population and the number of employees. That for me was a decision that I thought is why we should move them up. And also, like I said, I've been here a long time, for at least eight years, it doesn't seem like we have done a lot of moving on these positions for these people. So, I think it's well deserved, they've been with us over 27 years, I don't know, Brian is 20.
27 years.
Carol, or Cindy is.
Is over 20.
Yep. So, that's a lot of experience, it's a lot, a lot of experience to lose. I know they, they are elected positions, but they also are very valuable to Pennington County.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I just want to extend thanks to Carol for the work that she did relative to this and finding the comparables and being able to come, come together with a recommendation to us that really makes sense. So, thank you, appreciate it very much.
You're very welcome.
I, I too want to thank you for the, the work on this, and not only you, but also this commission, because this commission to take that bold step and finally take a look at these wages and take a hard stance to do what's right, some, to, to, instead of going with the political will, is amazing. And so, I really appreciate this commission for stepping up and doing what they did. We've made some great strides in this community and this, this commission office, so thank you. With that, we have a motion for approval, and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
So, I have a privilege.
Ms. Hickock.
So, again, talking about the wages and the, and the buildings and all this other things, if we, if our goal is to look at all departments, because we have looked at employees and we're making a lot of changes, that's something we need to look for for 2024 budget, and consider those options. Like I said, this is just the first step for us in this direction, not just for elected officials, but all department heads. I think we're a little behind on the curve, because we've been kind of giving them the same thing as the rest of the employees, which is good, but we also haven't kept up on the latest market values like we have the employees. We should do that for the department heads, so, thank you.
With that, I'd look for a motion for adjournment. Moved by Hickock, seconded by Drews. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.